America, into the public religious saints, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Dan Patterson.
Here.
Michael Faith.
Here.
Ryan Allen.
Here.
Olivia Newfresco.
Here.
Dan Kelly.
Here.
Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda order.
Uh, Dan, can I just say that?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, please, you've got acknowledgements.
Okay, number three is acknowledgements and announcements. Uh, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at two o'clock here at the town hall, we'll be having a meeting with Department of Health officials in regards to the PFAS contamination at the Lad Center and Charisell Industries. Uh, this is the earliest week to get them to agree to meet with us. Myself and the town planner have had a meeting with them. And the only information we've got from them is posted on the town website with all the bunch of links there in regards to the PFAS. So we'll be having a meeting on Wednesday the sixteenth at two o'clock here. In regards to that. Anybody else got anything? Sorry about that. Now it's approval of the agenda order.
Uh, my, I would, I would like to move that we approve the agenda order with one exception. I would ask that we, uh, address item ten L. It's a one business, item L. If we could address that beginning of the new business section, uh, it involves an issue regarding assessments. And our assessor is, is here this evening, like, be able to address that with her early on. She has family business. Two little family businesses.
No, it's up to.
There's a second.
Yeah, we're gonna move to the beginning of new business.
There's a second, Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approval of the consent agenda. Uh, any comments, yes, you know? Anybody on the floor, any reports?
Dan, please, five and twelve. Townplanner and urgency management.
Eleven, please.
Three and four, please. Okay, uh, anybody on the floor, any communications? Yes. Four and thirteen, please. Four and thirteen.
Uh, number eight is one we'd be addressing, I hope, under appointment. And number fourteen, which is our last, like, communication.
Uh, approval of the minutes. Which people have. Is everybody here?
No, Dan, I suggest we go through them individually. Because some people were absent from different meetings.
So I will hold you few minutes. Uh, okay, the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we do approval of the council regular meeting, June fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Did you get it? No, you were here.
I'm not speaking because I have to refuse myself. Not available.
Uh, we'll do the exec, also do the approval of the executive session minutes for July fifth.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm staying.
Do I speak as well because I was not here?
Okay, uh, number three is council regular meeting, July tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Moved to approve.
I'm gonna put the executive session there for July tenth.
Second.
Yeah, I was here.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, number five is the council special meeting, July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Moved to approve.
I, I wasn't here, so I, uh, have to excuse myself. Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Right.
May I speak also because I'm not here?
Two extensions.
Okay, number six is vacancies and appointments. And let's see, personal board, uh, conservation commission. We did have resignations or resignments. Okay, breakings. June Lyle, very more alternate member to serve three-year term beginning date of appointment. Exeter Whirlwind Preservation Trust Committee member to serve four-year term beginning date of appointment. That was a thousand and fifty. Uh, number three, Woodchuck, a tough wild and scenic river stewardship council, alternate member. Library Board of Trustees member to serve three-year term beginning date of appointment. Board of Canvassers, alternate member to serve unexpired term ending May third, two thousand twenty-seven.
Dan, before you move on, I, I don't, you know, if I'm not here, the meeting moves quickly. But I have something to say. And because we have several people here, just remember that there are a number of positions that we like to fill. Some are supporting the community, library board of trustees. So just, you know, community involvement is something that.
I would argue that all of them are supporting the community, so get involved if you can.
Well, okay, but my point is, you know, we ought, we could use the assistance of folks in the community to help with things.
Okay, uh, next up, number six, zoning board review, alternate member to serve five-year term beginning date of appointment. We did have one person for that.
Grab onto it.
Yeah, I move for consideration, appointment of Stevens, so that is a token to the zoning board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, number seven, public works worker. Rob, you're up.
How you doing? Good evening. Yes, um, my recommendation that I sent you, uh, is to recommend to immigration.
Well, certainly move for consideration, move ahead, but I'm hiring.
Second.
Any discussion? I did sit in with the interview when this gentleman interviewed for the superintendent position. He did concede that he didn't have a lot of management, but he, he did work for the town before, correct?
He did.
Yes, and then he went to the round DOT. And he says it's not a bed of roses over there, so.
Well, and, you know, uh, from Rob's, uh, letter to us speaks to a number of issues that I think are worth noting, particularly Tim's past performance was exceptional.
He also had a harmless license.
He does, yeah.
I'm moving. No. Go ahead. Well, I was just gonna say, the exact skill set we need here in this department would make an immense improvement to our team here at Exeter Public Works Department. So, I mean, I keep talking, I and Rob talk to Rob, you talk to him more, Dan, but Rob seems to feel that he's got a good crew and things are working very well. Now he says he'd like to add someone to make it work even better. Is that the point here?
Well, yeah, we'd be a full crew.
You're supposed to say yes, there you go, full crew.
How long, you said you worked with, how long did you say you worked with him?
About a year and a half, I would say, yeah. I don't know the exact dates, Mike.
Full time?
Oh, yeah, he was a public works worker for us.
So I have, um, some information, um, from what I consider a good source. And it wasn't a glowing recommendation.
Right, you shared that.
I don't know the man, I've done nothing for him or against him, but it was, uh, basically, uh, that, uh, I won't recommend it. So I just wanna state that.
All right.
For no other reason other than that.
Right.
I never met the man.
Um, he didn't ever shh acted or did any of those things that I read from that email that you sent me in, under our care.
The text.
Right, yeah. He was fantastic.
Okay.
Really.
Okay, we got any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next.
Okay. Next up, D, expiring term, zoning board review member, Timothy Robertson, term ending August first, two thousand twenty-three. We did have a correspondence, Mr. Robinson, last one.
Yeah, it's a, it's a September communication. Just came out, so.
Oh, I, I didn't get September yet, I'm trying to get September.
Can you appoint him now or wait till September? Wait till September, Kim? Okay, so we'll hold that till September? Uh, number seven, public hearings, A, class F-one special, one-day event liquor license application. Matt Richardson, owner applicant, Tilted Barn Brewery, One Hells Place, Exeter, Rhode Island. So we have to open this public hearing by the liquor licensing board? Motion to open the public hearing as the Exeter liquor licensing board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, you guys may remember last year we were here for the same license for a one-day event. Uh, we wanted to hold a sort of belated grand opening for the new building that we built. We opened during sort of peak COVID and didn't really get to celebrate anything. So last year we had a one-day event. Um, it was a ticketed event, we had about three hundred people that we sold tickets to. It went great, everyone really liked it. Um, couldn't have gone smoother, had due to the weather. And everyone said this needs to be an annual event, so, um, we want to start that tradition. Basically, it's a chance for us to sort of celebrate our customers that come all the time, to celebrate where we are. Uh, we invite some breweries from out of town, which is why we wanna have our, the one-day event license, so we can allow them to come and pour their beer here at our facility also. Um, and we use it as a fundraiser also. Last year we donated some proceeds from the event to a local family that had a fire, um, at their house. And this year we've decided to do the same thing, we can do the event. And we want to donate proceeds to the Exeter Volunteer Fire Department, sort of in recognition of the busy spring they had with the brush fires here. Um, we have some family members on the fire department and we're kind of close to them, which sounds would be a nice nod to them for the hard work they had this spring. So that's sort of the goal is this. We, we closed down our brewery for the day. Um, for outside sales, we just held this one event last year. We, we broke even, barely, with the ticket sales and everything, and we still donated the money to it. So it's more, it's not a money-making event, just so you guys know. It is really just sort of like a, kind of a way to celebrate end of summer, beginning of fall, busy time for everyone and kind of like what we do and what people do to support us and use that as a fundraiser and sort of just a, sort of a public event for everyone. So that's what it's all about and what we're hoping to do again, um, and why we're here.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Your liquor license, you, you, the one you have now, it's a brewery license, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So you can only sell what you actually make there?
Right, so that's, that's why this would be different. It's our license, um, as a brewery, we don't have a liquor license. We have a brewery license that lets us sell what we make on the facility or premises. So this is why we invite other breweries to come for the day too. And to do that, we have to go through the whole three-tier system and buy their.
Beer.
Buy their brewer, right. No hard liquor, yeah, just, just beer. But since we don't make it at our brewery, we ha, we have to buy it through a distributor. And to do that, we have to get a one-day license to do that.
I think the concept to me, I find it fascinating that other, 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 uh, competition folks come and show their ways. But it sounds like you have sort of a pub crawl, but nobody has to move because they're already there.
Pretty much, and we do, we have, we do sell designated driver tickets, we did last year.
I, I thought it was nice, no, I, that was a sort of tongue-in-cheek.
Well, yeah, that is essentially what it is.
Yeah, okay, well, then it wasn't so tongue-in-cheek.
I have a question, not related to this tonight, but I noticed that a lot of the local breweries close earlier. Is that part of the licensing or is that something that you guys just happen to do? Compared to some of the bars and stuff that close later?
So we, we, yeah, we close at eight mainly because we all wanna get home. And I've learned, my mom always told me, nothing would happen after like ten o'clock. We, we close only just because we wanna go home, because we learned too, like, uh, we're not a bar and, and so we don't get the bar crowds, which is nice.
Right, yeah.
And the ladies stay open, then where you get that kind of crowd.
Your crowds are very, very friendly.
They are, they are, we're lucky, we're lucky. Um, so, yeah, we, we sort of try and avoid, we stay out of that categorization of like being a bar. It's more of like a place to come and kind of hang out.
It's an experience.
It is an experience.
It's a vibe, as the kids would say.
More, and there are more, more kids than adults on both tables. Which is, which is fun though.
Okay, anybody else got any questions?
I have a question, I, I, just a comment. I, I mean, I think what you've created, and I haven't been around often, but it's, it's such a nice facility, and I was just talking to someone who came to your Wednesday.
The farmer's market, yeah.
I won't, well, their comment was, there wasn't a whole lot there, but that's not your fault. I mean, if, maybe they came late, I don't know. But anyway, it's good that you're doing these community things.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's sort of our goal of what we're doing is to have that.
But can people find you? Because I saw, I forget, people say, go up and down, I don't know where, you gotta, it's.
You guys pulled out all the stops, I mean, you guys did everything top-notch, the building, even the furniture in the back. I have that same furniture, and I know how expensive it is. And you have a seal.
Thank you.
It's like, oh my gosh, you just pulled out all the stops, and it's unbelievable.
Thank you. We, yeah, that's, again, that's what we're trying to do is, and like, it's really cool to be, that's what we sit back and say, wow, we're really like a community hub. There's not a lot of them in town, if you like, to do stuff like that, so we really embrace that.
It's a warm atmosphere, like, when you show up, there's not, there's not gonna be any fight. It's really nice.
Right, but we had Sergeant Miller last night, we had Dave's Market rented out our space last night, and Sergeant Miller was there for parking. Uh, and it was just, it was good to see him and to see about just how, you know, we were kind of used to crowds and see how smooth it went, and I think he was, he was helping parking kind of. And actually, my daughter, who I think was one of the veterans there, she's, she helps park all the time. It's like, wow, it's just really, we're, it's smooth, it's just nice. It's a good crowd of people, we kind of, we're used to the people that we get and the crowds that we get. And it's, uh, yeah, we hope that we're a bright spot in town.
Absolutely.
We achieved that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have prolonged the conversation in a way because the assessor is sitting behind us.
On a faceless.
Yard seal.
Sorry. I know.
Yard seal.
I opened the door and I, so anyway, I'm sorry.
If I could put my two cents in, they were, they were very professional. Very, very nice place, all the people there, even the people that, that were renting the place, Dave's Market, I couldn't, I couldn't believe how nice the people were and how nice the, the workers up there were.
Okay, any questions for people in the audience?
Public hearing.
All right, I will make the.
I have one thing, um, there's a hundred and fifty dollars owing in advertising.
Okay, I will make a motion to close the public hearing as the Exeter liquor license, liquor license board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, make the motions.
I'll make a motion that we approve this one-day liquor license for September ninth, twenty twenty-three, for the Tilted Barn Brewery. Second.
If you take your thing there. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is.
Thank you.
Well. Uh, you, let's see. Public hearing, an outdoor entertainment license, friends of the Exeter Public Library applicant, the whole annual fundraiser, Exeter Fall Festival, will benefit the Exeter Public Library Saturday, September twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-three, from ten AM to three PM at the Yagu Valley Ski Area, one sixty Yagu Valley Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, to approve music, artisans, vendors, and family entertainment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is Douglas, he's here.
Yes.
You're up next.
Yep, it's that time of year again, so we'll be holding the fundraiser for the Exeter Public Library. And I really appreciate to Yagu to offer up their venue for us, so we applied for the license. And again, we'll have entertainers, we're gonna have Matt Roberts, the magician, who's on the road show. So he'll be our main attraction. And then we'll have little, um, kids' games and things like that, pumpkin painting and stuff for the families. So it's, it's our biggest fundraiser for the year for the library, it's a lot of awareness. And we're, really enjoy having it every year and hope everybody will come out and we can feed there. And I'd like to request that you guys waive the application fee, and we owe our mailing fees yet too, so I can pay for those tonight.
Any questions for the council?
It's a great event, we have to go. And it's not deviating from past year's.
Nope, nope.
Formula.
Nope, same thing, mhm.
Go ahead, Cal, I know you wanna say something.
Well, the only thing I'm gonna say is that the group that Helen has chaired for years now.
Twenty-four.
Quite a few years since she was a child.
Thank you.
Well, the point is that they continue to raise funds for the library, and you should all know recently, they, uh, I won't, I look at the amount, but they, they've created a perpetual support for the library, for the Rhode Island Foundation, for considerable some that can, will continue to provide support for the library here in town, that taxpayers don't, you know, that we, we, there is a budget for the library, but additional support for the library comes through the friends. And I might add that the friends and the library staff have such a working relationship in recent years.
Yes, we have.
And you all work together, and that's partly to the credit of the fellow who chairs.
That's right.
Anyway, I have to say that, because we know, those few of you here, you can know that good things are happening.
The last couple of years are here to.
He went through a really tough time, yeah, well, well, I mean, I will, but, 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 everything's good. All right.
Okay, uh, any questions or comments from the public?
The advertising certified, minimum fees of two hundred and twenty-nine cents. The application fee is one hundred and twelve.
Well, I move that we waive the application fee. If there was a request made that we do that, we'd come back and.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have a motion, Cal?
Oh, if you'd like to, yeah, I'll make it again. Move that the application fee be waived. Oh, oh, yeah, I thought it was just waiting, and approve the application as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, number eight is public comment. Comments are not listed, I don't want to suggest that, however, items not on this agenda will only be heard and not acted upon by the town council unless they are a emergency nature. A three-minute talking room per person, fifteen-minute maximum time allowed for this agenda item. And the first individual that signed up for public comment is Virginia Howard.
Thank you. My name is Virginia Howard, my husband's name is Gerald Howard. We own property located at two eighty-nine Liberty Road. We are writing this letter to express our concern about a building project currently underway at two seventy-nine Liberty Road in Exeter. This property abuts our property. The property owner of two seventy-nine Liberty Road has demolished an existing house trailer. Through town records, we determine that there were no permits for this work. We contacted Ron DeFrancesco, the building official, on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, to express our concern about the permits, our lack of permit, and to discuss the fact that the original house trailer used a cesspool. Our discussion with Ron centered on the fact that state regulation requires any individual who is in use of an existing cesspool, upgrade their system, and obtain an approved ISDS for a new system before issuing permits for changes made to the property. Ron assured us he would look into this matter. We are here tonight to submit this letter to the town council and once again voice our concerns. And is, as, it is now our understanding that on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, a building permit, twenty-three, two eighty-four, was issued to approve the demolition of the house trailer, pour a foundation, and build a new two-bed, one-bath residential home on the existing footprint. There is currently a state permit, two-three-one-one, zero-seven-one-four, submitted by the owner in June of twenty twenty-three, that shows a request for a soil evaluation. There has been no additional work done beyond the request for the soil evaluation. And the property currently does not meet state regulation, and the town has approved a building permit. We are here tonight to request the council take this matter under review.
Next move is Gerald Howard?
Yes.
Are you submitting that for the record?
I, my wife has said.
You're all set, you don't need to.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to add something to that, if I may, before, I would like to add something, if I may, before you move on. Uh, we're not here just to, you know, cause an issue within a budding property owner. We're here because we, um, are currently, have an issue with this abutting property owner, and we just wanna make sure that all the rules and the regulations are followed. He is currently, um, trying to take sixty-five feet of our land at adverse possession. We surveyed the property, so we know this, he's only owned the property two years, or she, I should say. We wanna make sure that everybody's aware of what's happening out there and that the septic system that does get designed and approved before he's allowed to build is on his property and not encroaching on ours.
That your main concern right there?
Well, that, you don't issue a permit when the state requires you to update a cesspool and that it doesn't encroach onto our land, which he's already has by sixty-five feet with chicken coops and, you know, other stuff that he has.
Okay, I've gotta move on to the next one, so. Uh, the third person is Asa Davis.
Per Dr. Burns at the Department of Health, lad and carousel contaminants are different. There are two likely sources, not just one, so that's good news. A natural gas plant can be ruled out, so that leaves two others, including the town garage just upstream of lad, already under DEM scrutiny. Remember the solar emergency that threatened our life safety? The council sprang into action then, but this is different. This is real, it's not imaginary, and the spill already happened. Lad levels are almost five times over the prohibited drinking limit. Twenty seventeen and nineteen tell, way below that. PFAS tests are called forever chemicals because like mercury, they accumulate and don't break down in the body or environment. They bind to blood protein, they're implicated in blood, liver, and kidney cancers, miscarriages, stillbirths, and birth defects. Drinking water is now being trucked into lad. We know the aquifer is already contaminated, it can't be scrubbed, and it will head generally south, right towards Deerbrook, Oak Harbor, Pineview, the Yagu Water Park, and a lot more people beyond. Marusack's Browning Mill Victory over DEM sent a message, the state needs to follow town ordinances. That's a two-way street, the town needs to follow state laws and its own laws too. The groundwater zoning overlay applies to lad, so those rules should be followed just like they should be at the town garage. The zoning board had a chance to set this right a few months ago, but did nothing. This might be a good issue to put Marusack on. NK and the Rhode Island AG are already involved in lawsuits over PFAS. At the least, the council should test the garage and animal shelter water, and until it's proven clean, supply bottled water for drinking. We might not be planning on more kids, but some town employees and volunteers on those sites may. Tests would help the DOH sort out. Tests would help the D O H sort out the problem's source, size, direction, and speed. I hope you deliberate carefully over the plant R F P. You'll put the town on the wrong path and invite further legal action if you award to a noncompliant bidder. We already told D E M we'd comply with their remediation requirements. The response was for seedlings, not the juvenile plants required by D E M and the R F P. And then lastly, regarding Olivia's comments about emails. By state statute, the town is responsible for retention, preservation, and production of its official records, however they're generated. This includes communications by town employees, including emails on personal accounts if they're used for official business. Per recent A P R response, the town is not doing this. Matt's check emails dating back years were not delivered to the town when he quit. Morgan didn't deliver his emails to the town as required by state law. You should also have them from Mayor D Gregorio and Andrews. Based on the timeframes involved, there are likely hundreds to thousands of missing records over the years. The town has already lost two A G open records cases. Thank you.
Okay, next up, number nine, new business, but we're going to take.
Excuse me.
Ten L from Old Business.
Excuse me, I forgot to sign in, but I would like to speak if I could, please.
Why don't you identify yourself, or you have to sign in? Do you have to sign the sheet here?
Sure. It's regard to the water.
Okay. I just go read anything.
Sure.
Timothy Burke, next on public comment.
It's regard to the water, I read about on paper. My name is Timothy Burke, I live in two-ten South Road in Exeter here. Been a resident over twenty years. The issue with the water, I'm very, very concerned. My wife has suffered cancer twice, I had to take it to that, it's horrible. With this, 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 the fear of this chemical being in our water, it really disturbs me, you know, and my family. I mean, I draw water off that and I worry about it every day now when I hear this, you know. I would never think there would be that kind of a problem. You know, I know they built the fire training center up there, I came and spoke on it. And at that time, I asked them not to go forward with using any chemical foam spray up there. And I don't know if they're doing that, I hope not, they said they wouldn't. But I believe the wells up there is where the problem is, where the water's contaminated. I know they said something about quarks it, but I believe the wells are up there at Lad Center and everything is coming out of there. So all our groundwater, I live all around that area. I, my, my property goes right up to the edge of Williams Reynolds and about twelve hundred foot South Road. So I got a good access, my neighbor across the street, his wife had had cancer. You know, I'm really concerned, this, this has nothing to play with this chemical. But I, and I would, I would like to know if the town, you know, if they could come out and test water for us around that area to make sure they're protected.
I'm going to answer your question.
Sure.
Normally, we're not supposed to speak at a public comment. Myself and guilty task well, it was, as soon as we were notified, it was a weekend ago, we met with them. And the information on the town webpage is all they've given us. When was going back and forth with the health department officially last week to get a meeting in place? Because that was one of our questions to them. Are you going to help these people test their wells? And they're, I'm not going to say evasive, not saying a lot. But they are going to be here on the sixteenth at two o'clock, and it is a public meeting.
They'll be here.
Right now, it's pretty much here, or we're going to move them.
Doing it here.
Yeah, we're going to be doing it here. But just keep an eye out on the agendas in case we move it to the libraries or something.
Okay.
What we've given you is everything that we've been told so far, so.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to take ten L from Old Business first. Carrie, welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be back.
Let me just open the door. Well, this, you may recall that you might, well, there was a lady, a resident from Deerbrook who approached us through communication which was forwarded to Carrie. I believe that's the way that happened. So Carrie has now given you some information here on her memo, her memo dated July nineteenth. And she's speaking about savings, if you will, for reductions of taxes to. And so she's, she's responding, I spoke to her this afternoon, and I said, Carrie, we, she said, I was planning to come, so I think it would be nice for Carrie to tell us a little bit about it. I mean, I have concerns, and I think you all will, when you, if you don't already, you can hear from Carrie.
Okay, yes.
Thanks, Carrie.
You're welcome. So the woman had sent the letter requesting that the tax exemption should be revised to reflect current inflation. I did send the schedule in my memo. It's, I reached out to other communities to see if they have similar ordinances in place for a tax exemption for properties that are deemed lower moderate. Unfortunately, of the thirty-nine cities in town, we are the only community that has an exemption of such. So I really didn't have anything to compare it to if they changed their schedule based on inflation. The other thing that's a little tough is I'm not privy, until the applications are submitted, to what the total household income is, it's a forever changing thing and the number of people in the household. If I, I reached out to Rhode Island Housing, they do not have a suggestion. They said it's up to the cities and towns, what they would have for a schedule of income. So it's a little tough, but what I would recommend is possibly adjusting it by increments of five thousand. So based on the total household, if it was forty-five thousand or under, it would be adjusted to the thousand dollars off, and then it would go up in increments of five thousand, just to reflect some inflation, if, if anything. Because there's really nothing to compare it to.
If I could, let me just take that one step further. Since it's an ordinance, we have a phrase. Carrie and I discussed that will have to, that would have to come through a process of us holding a private hearing. And, and the concern when we start talking about assistance in this regard, there are other people, I don't know if you've had requests, I've had a number of people suggest. And I can't, I can't be the one to promote more of a discount for an older person since I'm one of those who. But others have said, why, why isn't, why isn't there, how do you explain it?
We do mail out over five, five hundred plus elderly disabled exemption forms. That ordinance was put in place in two thousand and four. That has also not been adjusted to reflect inflation. So we get that question as well, as if I'm making under fifty-two thousand, that's the cutoff. If you exceed that, you don't, you don't, you don't get the sliding scale. So to be fair and equitable, if, if you, if you change it on the lower moderate, we do get the request as well on the elderly disabled exemption.
So it makes sense to do both?
Right. If, if we, if council chooses, I have another suggestion for administrative to make relief. The deadline is currently March first, fully affordable when it was put in in two thousand and nine. But the question is always posed, I don't get my taxes done until April fifteenth. So if we, if council chooses to go the route of changing and going through the channels of public caring to amend this, I would suggest changing the deadline at the same time to April fifteenth. So that gives more time. We did it, we had, through the state about two years ago on the elderly disabled. It was always March fifteenth, and then we moved it a month till April fifteenth, and that allowed more time, which was received really well.
So specifically, we're talking about moving the date from March first to April fifteenth. We're talking about a five thousand dollar increase to each of the brackets.
Right, and the wages. So the tax credit will remain the same, it's just shifting an increment to five thousand, the wages.
And then the same thing on the, the over sixty-five.
Well, currently, it's five thousand dollars, so we.
Exemption.
Yeah, there's two parts to that, there's five thousand, there's two parts to the elderly disabled, sixty-five and plus exemption. You get flat five thousand dollars off your assessment based on age, just being over sixty-five. Depending on the tax rates, around eighty dollars off the bill. So we hear often that that should be increased as well, the five thousand. And then also with the income, if you're over sixty-five and your income is less than fifty-two thousand, you can receive a percentage off. And that caps the income since two thousand and four at fifty-two thousand. I'm just thinking, you know, when I mail out these forms annually, we hear, we usually hear the deadline. I don't get my taxes done until April fifteenth, and then we hear, I make over fifty-two thousand, when's the last time you adjusted this? And we, we do also get the five thousand dollars is low, you haven't changed this since two thousand and four. What is eighty dollars off the tax bill? These are just concerns that I hear often when we mail out these forms on an annual basis.
So you want to change that one to, up by five thousand to ten thousand?
If, these are just some of the concerns that I hear that I'm expressing, yeah. Even, yeah.
I, I. I'm sorry, but I'm looking at panic stricken Treger, who says, so we make up for this? How am I partly correct in your panic stricken face?
It adds up. I'm not a good, I, I understand it's a shift too, so when you pull from one side, it's a pie chart. It has to be, you know, made up somewhere else. So the, the other side of me, I agree.
Yeah, well, that's why we have to.
These are just suggestions.
You know, when we discuss this, if we address this, you know there are towns that have the, a homestead, no, what do you call it?
The homestead, I get that.
Yeah, well, everyone wants that here, you know, well, not everyone wants it, but people, I'm not asking shift. But I would be affected by it. And, and that, that puts, again, a larger burden on the younger families in town. Because they have to pick up what older people are paying. I want, wait a minute.
But that's why things like the impact fees and other things that businesses can bring in will make up some of that, but they go for specific things, but that's a whole different discussion.
I think so.
But there's a lot of pieces to the pie that can be shifted.
It's a conservative topic.
My head over there, yes, many pieces of this issue.
Yeah.
So you two have to work out.
What?
The letter was addressed to me.
Can I, I'd like to make a suggestion that, that, and I thank you for spending the time to come and talk to us. I would like to suggest that we write Ms. Dame, is her name, and indicate we've, we've addressed the situation, it's a complex issue, and we are taking under advisement the question of adjusting the exemption rate. Do you know what I mean? So at least she knows we didn't throw it under, you know, so that she doesn't come back to Carrie and say, well, what did you do?
Because then we can really adjust, I mean, really look at what this would look like and what it would actually do to the budget and the things coming in.
Understood, and, and I put in the memo too, the, the tough part about this is two things I'd like to bring to the council when we're talking matters is this is what other communities are doing, and this is how they, they've changed it. But I can't. And the other thing is, this is.
No one's doing it.
No, and this isn't that nice enough? Well, to make it even more complicated, which I didn't want to get too complicated, is that they can, they're capped at, as she mentioned in her letter, they're capped at in the lower moderate, not the elderly disabled, but they are capped at what they can sell their property for because they've wanted, they're de-restricted by ninety-nine years, they can only sell for X amount of dollars. But it, it, at times, our exemption goes, if they get, if they're a single family, a single person in a household making under forty thousand with a thousand dollars off, sometimes that's less than what the, they would sell it for. So they're saving more on their assessment than what they could even sell the property with their cap at in some scenarios. Other scenarios, they don't apply for the exemption because when they moved in about a decade ago, they were at an entry level position, and now they've married and they're making over a hundred thousand dollars a year, and they do not apply. So it's, there's a lot involved in this exemption and when it was introduced. And I think she talks more of inflation and that the, the wages should be adjusted. And that's why I just, if the wages are adjusted, maybe five thousand.
So, so it sounds like this is a program that we already have.
Yes.
That needs to be updated. We're not asking for new monies, we're updating it with the inflation, right? Can I ask you?
Yes.
To outline, I think there's four items that you, can you probably distribute a memo to us?
Sure.
Outlining four things, the date change from March first to fifteenth.
Yes.
The increase, adding five thousand dollars to each of these brackets.
Okay.
The increase on the sixty-five-year-old flat exemption from five thousand to ten thousand.
Okay.
And the fourth thing is increasing the household income.
And the sliding.
By five thousand dollars in each category.
It's capped, the fifty percent, we can, you can do that as well, it's capped at fifty-two thousand.
Do you think that's problematic to make that change or no?
Yes.
Your opinion?
You can do that, you can also take, it's capped at fifty-two thousand, so if you see the fifty-two, you can raise that and then we get five percent instead of doing each one.
That sounds better, so can you put those four in a, in a memo? And then perhaps we can discuss it? And then maybe if we decide collectively to have a hearing, we can push it forward and get it done.
Absolutely. The other thing I just wanted to mention is when it matters before council, like I said, I would rather have, this is what other communities are doing, as well as this is the physical impact. And unfortunately, I'm not privy to.
But it has to be updated.
All that?
It's not a program that we're implementing, it's, it's.
It doesn't have to be updated.
It doesn't have to.
We also need. Inflation is what the impact is going to do with the other people.
But they have something else, other towns have something different.
Yep, because I would say, okay.
No, they ask it, they ask it.
Well, we, we were talking the physical impact and where it's hard to determine until they report it, how it's going to shift to the other taxpayers that can't apply to it, is you would have to know X amount of people are going to apply for this, and they, it's a forever changing thing because people move out, people come, as far as the households. So until it's reported to me saying, I make X amount of dollars, people have raises and then they lose their job. So I have a certain scenarios where their, their percentage that they get off changes every year because she may be volunteering, maybe, not volunteer, but she may be making money with her social security and then certain other incomes coming in, and then she loses a position and now she's getting a thousand dollars off, or gets hired and makes more money. So the physical impact's a little hard, but I can give a rough estimate of what it would be, definitely.
And do, since Exeter is the only community that does this, or the low to moderate income housing, are there other communities that do other things?
They assess during revale at a fair market value in comparison to what they can sell the property for. And.
And that would raise it.
That would raise it.
And that would, yeah, in, in some scenarios. Because we assess it at fair market value, we don't take into consideration the de-restriction. But we allow them to apply for an ordinance.
Yeah.
So that way, as incomes change and there's more money in the household, they would no longer get the exemption, or they would get two hundred and fifty dollars off and so on. But if they're in need, then they would, in less than forty thousand, then they would get the exemption, a thousand dollars. So depending on where the income falls and how many people reside in the home, that's the income schedule.
I want to say, which ones better, Carrie?
Yeah.
Like this, what we have or what other communities do?
Another, another thing to mention is when Deerbrook Development was built, this was going to court, this issue, this was going to court. And whether, you know, the homes were finished up and it, the issue was dead in the water, but, but it was. This was going to court, and whether, you know, the homes were finished up and it, the issue was dead in the water, but, but it was, it was on its way um, over a decade plus ago to go to court, because there was that argument on both sides, I don't know, you know. There was an argument on both sides whether it should be assessed at fair market value, and because the homeowners can only sell the property for X amount of dollars, or if an exemption should be established. So it, it, it was on its way to.
Yeah, could I suggest, I didn't, I mean, I, you know, I know we have a lot of other business, you know, but nevertheless, you know, it's there, it's on the agenda, so. Carrie wanted to speak to it, I wanted to speak to it. I would suggest that we move on, on the agenda, and, but thank Carrie for bringing.
Am I ready to do Dame as a suggestion?
Oh, that was my suggestion that we addressed, and we're taking it under advisement regarding any possible change in the ordinance. And I should, we should mention, it's an ordinance, because that emphasizes that this has to go through a process.
It's an.
And I don't know if there's a second.
Who do you, second?
Second.
Well, then, uh, this is record of being done and it's been addressed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Good night with the twins.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, number nine, new business, A, Department of Public Works awarding a bid replacement of Viking Pro Line, all-season duck body model PL one oh one one S P. They're up, love. Ah, okay. All right, um, good evening, again, um, yeah, so my recommendation was for the bid that came in to replace this body. Uh, this is the first that we're trying to do this, because this truck here, it was four hundred and eleven thousand dollars to replace. We think it's a good unit to put the money into the body. This one here, DPW workers will take the old rusty, broken body off, and will send that frame truck, uh, out to get fitted with this new body. We, I plan on, in the future, because we have another candidate that we can do this with, trying to do the whole job at DPW. But I figured with all the work we got to do, let's try half of it this time around.
Well, for discussion, I'm a little bit, well, that way you award the, the two, um, Viking, Viking Gears USA.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I got one bid on that, huh?
Yes.
Nobody else.
Did this body jump sideways still?
Yeah, it's a side dump, it's an all-season, so that's what's actually broke on the one that we have, the hinges. And it's not cost effective to put the money into that particular bed, we've already, five grand for one hinge in this three of them, so I, I just like the, it's. And the rest of the body's following that, so I just think it's, other towns are doing this, somebody that are modeling some stuff off of, he's doing this fully in-house. And I think it's a great thing, I'm gonna have a great truck, it's a great truck, except for it's rotten, divided, so.
How many miles is the chassis got?
Ninety thousand miles.
Diesel?
Yeah, yeah.
No emissions.
Pre-emissions.
Was it seven-three?
No, uh, you gotta excuse me on that, I don't know these smaller three-hundred horse engines by hot.
It's international, it's one of the international.
It's an international, um, strong motor, I am also sinking a little money into, uh, preventative maintenance in that whole drive train. At the same time, we're gonna be sandblasting and needle hammering the, all the rust off. While the frame, the body's off, we're gonna be doing the frame as best we can, get ten, ten more years out of it easy, I believe.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I B, Department of Public Works awarding a bid replacement of two thousand and seven four-by-four F thirty-fifty service truck.
Right, so once again, um, so this is the same truck we've been trying to replace for a couple of years. Um, not, not much has changed, except, um, we are going for gas models now. Flood Ford, again, the only, um, bid that we got, and it's actually less money than I had allotted for. And they're still giving us six thousand dollars, two and a half years later for our trade-in.
Even though you've used it for two more years.
It runs every week, not every day anymore, she runs every week. Um, I think from the last thing, we put eleven or twelve thousand miles on it since they gave us this, but, um. So my recommendation, not only to award this flood, but to allow them to give us the six thousand dollar trade-in value as well.
How come they only get one bid on some of these things?
Um, to be honest with you, somebody almost, there was a, a personal problem in another dealership's thing, happened on the same day. Why they wait till last minute on these things, I'm not sure, but that's it. I, there was two people that we brought truck eleven to, to have the trade-in value assessed, um, only one of whom did it. We called, uh, just, just, you know.
We're advertising properly, right? We're doing everything proper?
Well, yeah, it got out to them, like I said, it was a family issue, that I called the guy and, uh, cause I had stopped in, in-house things, and there was only one bid at that time. And I was like, whoa, this should be two, because we brought it to two dealers, and.
Is it covered that only two dealers? Should, is, should we do three?
It's been advertised.
I mean, anybody can look at it, like, I mean, as far as.
We know a lot of people look.
Okay, so more than two, these are the ones that called me.
Um, I have this one company, every time I have a bid, I have to send them the bid minutes, they're in the mid-country, so they see it on my, so I don't know.
They're the only two that called me for, to, to look at our, our trade-in, so I don't know, I don't expect it's out there. If you see one of my other bids, we got Massachusetts bid, so that's getting out of there, just for this particular model, you know, no.
But isn't this the one that was two years trying to get it?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that could be part of the reason, like, it's just things maybe.
We're not gonna wait a year and a half to get this though.
No, they assured me that, um, the building in October will have an actual VIN number, I spoke with them about that. And I, it, it is probably more like February, so it's, it's five months maybe, I don't know. We, we did, in my RFP, give them six to eight months, that's, that's fair. And we have truck eleven to use until then.
Dan, can I ask, you, you've discussed these, haven't you, with Rob?
Well, I was in there the other day looking at the two thousand and seven, it was pretty scary.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm overly accept Rob's, uh, approve Rob's recommendation to what's a bid to, uh, to Ford.
Second?
With the six thousand dollars.
Including the trade-in, the six thousand.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I B C, Department of Public Works awarding a bid seventy to seventy-five foot Forest Republic truck.
Yeah, um, it is seventy-five, um, I just put, that was what I put my hands out, tried to reach out to a couple of different, you know, not just one particular unit. Uh, this one that I'm recommending is the actual one that we got a demo for three weeks. Um, I had, in fact, we had a couple, an obrist come in and work with us a day in, got his opinion. I just talked with Davy Tree, who did a job recently out on Summit Road for us, they had an Altec, they love the truck. Um, I think it's all of what we need here to stay on track with all these dead stands that I have to take down out of town only. After I got the, the, um, the bid offering, I was reading it in, um, page eleven, there's a recommendation about a safety, I, I didn't get that in my RFP. These are really technical machinery, it's hard for me to put everything in my specs. But there is a recommendation on a safety feature that I, I strongly suggest that we get, just in case I, or any, say, bill, we don't have a supervisor. Not that somebody would be stupid, but this particular thing, if you don't strap into this thing and you don't connect your land yard, it doesn't move. Um, our eyes can't be everywhere at all times, and we don't put people who are un, inexperienced in these anyway, but say I'm not there, uh, twenty years from now, and we still have this truck, I just want it to be as safe as possible.
That's an addition to the two, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's an addition to the two hundred and forty-eight thousand, that forty-five.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to note that, um, it's something I didn't catch building this RFP, um, please excuse that, but there's a lot of details to these specs equipment, so.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm a little bit, we, uh, the town purchased the seventy-five foot Forest Republic truck from Altec on the price of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars, that includes safety features.
So you added, did you, what did you say for the no, you added?
Two fifty-two, four eighty-one.
Excellent.
And this truck is being paid for out of our.
Yes, it is, so.
Thank you for noting.
And we had some.
The ori, the original quote you were getting.
Yes. The original, the, the first time.
When you were talking, it was around two eighty-three or something?
Well, no, the first time I put my feelers off one of these trucks, they come in at three fifty. So when I seen this, I was almost like, let's get this thing here, and they were so, they were like, if you're not sure, here, we'll give it to you. And they also gave me Bristol, uh, Rhode Island to talk to, their service department has no problems with this particular, uh, model freightliner, so, you know.
I say smile happy, you know, but bad treasure, and, um, I just, I just think it's to your credit, Rob, for what you do and reaching out, collecting with other communities. Trying to do the right thing.
They share a lot with other DPWs that it seems are valued.
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next up, Department of Public Works awarding a bid two forty-yard receiver containers, this is from a transfer station, these are for the packer, correct?
Um, as you, as you know, eyes are well over twenty years old, I believe, I, I, I don't know the complete history, but they're originals, worn to the bottom, paper thin bottoms. We're through it, every time we're putting a patch in, we're burning holes right through these units, uh, it's time. These are better units, because they're not ripped, they're smooth sides, so they won't have that wear and tear as the materials go across the bottom. So the bottom is basically the most problem, because they're rusty looking, but the bottom wears paper thin, you can't even weld through. So it's basically replace the floors, which is not cheap, with steel, or replace these, and my recommendation, uh, once again, I don't know everything about everything. And in here, I found out there's a heavy duty and a standard duty. Uh, for a little extra money, you go with the heavy duty, we're gonna get, I don't know, ten plus years extra out of it. So it's kind of like, right now, this is like two, and it's done for a very, very long time.
What does the heavy duty mean, heavy gauge?
It's heavy gauge, yeah, uh, the dimensions are, you know, again, I didn't know all this, I tried to do as much whenever, to build my RFP. But I couldn't get the information, because these places are all over the country. Um, we got bids out of Jersey, Mike, to your question before, so I mean, they, we're getting people hitting on certain things. So I believe we're getting out there now, as far as that, but I, I, I strongly suggest that we stick with the, uh, the heavy duty ones.
Which one is that?
So that'd be the twenty-six, uh, well, that would be, um, Rhode Island container. Uh, they are a local company, um, not that that matters, because they would, and all this means, all, all these are shipped to our transfer station, uh, completely ready to work.
The other two bids are light duty?
Light duty, I checked them all out, and I asked, I did some apples and apples comparisons, nobody else. I didn't put it in there, but I didn't not put it in there either, okay, and I don't know every little thing about every little thing. But, um, I want what's best for there, it seems under my watch, and I, I really think the heavy duty's the way to go.
Can I just say something about your humbleness and your sincerity is very refreshing.
I just said, I'm a standard.
Thank you.
Sorry, as soon as I go, I go against the grain with you, but I'm just trying to do my thing.
I respect that, Mike, I really do. Thank you.
The other thing was that we wanted to run this close by too, so if there's any issues, you're gonna run it in Jersey or leave it in Mass or.
Yeah, I mean, these things are big pieces of steel, there's really no, they're not, ours are still fine.
It should be an issue, but you never know with our ones.
The, the floors are paper thin, along the, it's like.
And you can recycle these? Can you send them up to like Exeter Scrap?
Yeah, cut them up and throw them in the dumpster. Yeah, well, I have plans, we're gonna, we're gonna refurb once, one of them. Over time, we're gonna refurb one of them and have an alternate recycled packer, because right now, these are just for the trash. And that's the stuff that's squishing out and is landing on our disposal guy's truck, and he's gotta get under there and dripping on his neck. I mean, this is like nasty, squishy, the recycled one is still nasty, but it's basically paper products and maybe a little bit of juice from the box. It's not diapers and things.
Jeez. Some good recommendations, Rhode Island.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Rob's, uh, recommendation to award the bid for the two forty-yard receiver containers. To Rhode Island container products for twenty-six thousand, four hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
C, Department of Public Works awarding a bid forty-foot, uh, eight-foot storage container.
All right, so I'm.
Rob learned a new lesson on this, and I know about, Carrie would love this one.
Right, so, this recommendation, we just, um, you guys okay, uh, we got one from Eagle, which Eagle has a bid in here. Eagle was, uh, friends of Animal Shelter bought a, the same exact thing, except they put a garage door on the side. I was impressed with that unit, which is what, you know, I was originally thinking we needed. When we put the bid out, someone that I did not know put a bid in, and I get to talking to this gentleman, and what they have is they have refurbished ones that have a full life. They bring it in, sandblast it, and put paint on it, and they sell them, all right? So what this one company, um, Mini Warehouse does, they offer that for five thousand dollars. What I found out is they have what's called a one-use, they build them overseas, they put materials in it one time for a trip overseas. Essentially, again, a brand-new unit, and, uh, it's, instead of painting, they have resin floors, which I think will hold up a lot stronger than paint. Uh, these are for, uh, machines, uh, it's, I'm losing some trailers, so I, I need to put some machinery in this. So that, they're watertight, but it's, it's, getting a brand-new one for a thousand dollars, well, I think, not, I don't think it's wasted money. Trying to, you know, just have a brand, this, it's, any dent that we put in it, it'll be my guy's fault, or myself, I mean. So I did not know they were doing that out there, um, so my recommendation.
They don't ship anything back to China, it's not worth them to take them back.
Right. So it's a one-use, is what they call it, and so that's what I recommend.
I've known about that three years.
I know, yeah, it's still depressing.
Right, they have stacks of them, they're in stock, so stacks of them, can have one next week.
What's your recommendation you're selling?
Uh, to get the one-time, uh, reuse unit for six thousand.
Five, five, five thousand?
Six thousand.
Six, what, what's the rule one?
No, there was, there's five, he's adding it, making it a thirty unit, am I correct?
Oh, okay.
Well, it's, it's, it's not sandblasted and painted, it's got original paint, it's got a resin floor.
Can we do that, because it's not on here?
What do you mean?
Well, I'm just asking, Lynn, it wasn't, it's not on the bid, it's public?
Right here.
Okay, so, okay, so we can do that, right?
Got it. I put newer used in the RFP, so.
Come here, wait, turn that page, okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept Rob's, uh, suggestion of awarding a bid to Mini Warehousing for six thousand dollars. For forty foot by eighty foot storage container.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, F, Department of Public Works awarding a bid plants, trees, evergreens and bushes, that bid, we are gonna put on hold. We only received the one, and we're still awaiting final approval on that item anyway, so that, we're gonna continue. G, Department of Public Works requested Rob to bid solid waste and recycling all. I just had that in front of me, you had a note there, I think it was the age of the truck. I just had that in front of me, you had a note there, I think it was the age of the truck, the bid specs. Let me try and find the package to get out.
You talked about the RFP that he's.
Yeah, it's going out.
Yeah, I have it here, what?
Um, I'm sorry, I was just trying. Is that this bid, uh, not over 15 years, 2005 production yet?
I mean, that's something you might wanna, just, they're like me, though, like you, we're trying to keep.
Yes, um. I'm not sure why I even thought that was important, but in the debate, quite honestly.
Are the, how old are, do you have any idea how old the trucks are that they currently use?
No, I, I, I have to figure they're 2008s and 9s.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure, because they kind of, the model doesn't change physically looking too much. They change some of the inside stuff, but a lot of these trucks, they kind of stay the same looking.
Because the whole.
Well, what's happening in the trade with all these emissions we're putting on the, like, we, we're going with the gas engine pickup trucks. Trucks that are pre-emission are worth premium right now, because you can't work on these new ones. As soon as the warranties are up, people are getting rid of them, we're filling the junkyards up with seven-year-old trucks now, because you can't work on.
So you want to revise the specs?
See, you know, is that something we should discuss, whoever gives us a bid?
You talked about the 15 years, is that what you're saying right now?
I could.
It's underwriting.
It's not even like out yet, right, because now I could change, instead of amending it, can I just?
It's a request to go out, right?
Huh?
It's a request to go out, so you can always amend it, go back next month, and request to go out on that.
Well, the contract's coming up, so it's not something I can.
Uh, why don't you amend it to like 1998, you know?
Okay.
Because just about all these garbage haulers are using MAPs.
Right, yeah.
Instead of 2005, you mean?
It all has to do with, with emissions standards that they've.
So it's just an old, old truck?
People are keep, we've got one Mac, the service manager at Mac told me three years ago, do not sell it. He goes, dump 40 grand into it, he goes, we can't even fix the one for sale, you know? And basically, that's what the trades are doing, we're going down fighting and kicking.
So how would I fix that, just put it out as is, and have that conversation, or?
Well, no, why don't we, before we vote to put it out, before we vote tonight to put it out to bid, why don't we adjust what we have in front of us, can we do that?
That was the only issue I saw.
You can just strike that line.
Okay.
While that, yeah, can we just do that?
You could, you could, you could, you could go out to bid and only adjust it, I mean.
Just strike that.
You're just making, this is the public, this is the public.
Right, we're approving this, we're approving this to go out to bid, so why don't we adjust it, and then approve it as adjusted?
With the following adjustment.
Whatever you wish to do, I'm just.
So it has to amend it right with it?
She's everything, pretty now pretty.
No, it's, it hasn't been published, right?
Okay.
All you do is come to town council, asking them to allow you to go out to bid in a certain way. The council's saying, we'll allow you to go out to bid, but we want it adjusted this way.
Okay.
So you're getting the approval, that's the first step.
Yeah.
You don't even have to say it, I mean, yes, that's what I'm trying to explain, that's why that's a good suggestion, Cal.
Thank you.
And so, okay, that's what's going on, and I think it's perfectly legal to amend.
Thank you.
So Olivia said, well, just strike the line, if you want to make it, uh, old.
I'm just saying, I just picked a date, because, you know, the majority of these roll-off companies are still running our model MAX.
Right.
Which is like, I think it's like '05, '06, when they went to the granites.
I run a 2002 Peterbilt, and it's the best one in the fleet, and they have 20, 24s up there, so.
Yeah.
So just to say, I don't know why.
And exactly, one company in Mass, one up in, uh, New Hampshire, they're actually taking these trucks and rebuilding them, reframing them for a hundred thousand dollars, they're going to notice because, all because of these permissions that they're bringing to the trucks.
I don't drive that.
Well, go by, we're in Newark right now, where you see what, you're looking at like 280 to 300, 100,000 dollars.
Well, what do you want to do with the language?
Uh, just want to strike him for 98?
Yes.
It's just, like I said, most of these garbage companies are running our models, so, they're going down fighting and kicking, they don't want to give them up, so.
You got it?
Yes, sir.
Well, so that's all right, move it out tonight, right? Change not older than whatever, 28 years, 32 years, 40 years.
I don't, I don't own a garbage truck, so. Okay.
25 years old, with that?
Uh, motion to send Department of Public Works out to bid for the solid waste recycling hauling with the corrected language in the one sentence. Okay, understood, uh.
Request for proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I M H, Public Works Department requesting Rob to bid fog seal using asphalt emulsions, is that what you're doing on old trucks?
No, actually, this is a step that, um, I learned in pavement preservation seminar, this is what you do to new asphalt, like to keep it from degrading, this keeps the small aggregates that would make that rideability smooth, say Mall Roadhouse, really smooth, where we paved, um, a preventative thing is, after a couple of years, you put it down, you hit this, and what it does, it locks them small aggregates, so the water doesn't start beating down it, locks in that, the top layer.
Like a crack seal, tighter surface?
Sort of, it, it, it kind of covers the whole thing, you don't even know it's there, within that day, you don't even know it's there, but it's a preventative thing, it kind of binds that stuff for longevity.
Now, is it gonna be used on chip seal, or are you using on existing?
This is just, it, no, it, it's all by itself, it's liquid you, they put down.
It can be on anything, it can be on chip seal or.
You can put on any, yes, absolutely, in fact, you know, some of these roads, we spent a lot of money on chip sealing.
And they skipped that step?
Like, well, no, it's not that they, it's not that they skipped it, we didn't get to it yet, because time goes on, and you forget about things. You're riding on a beautiful road, you don't think it's that bad, but this preserves it at that state, or gives it more time.
Does this prevent the snowplow from picking so much of it up, of it, when you do the chip seal?
Um, no.
No, okay.
But, this is, this, this, my target for this particular stuff right now is for the asphalt that we did, uh, Sunderland and Hopkins Hill Road, we just paved them a year and a half, two years ago, it's time to put a preventative maintenance step on there to keep it that good, before it starts cracking, before it starts breaking down, and what it is, is you've got little tiny aggregates in there with some quarter wrenches, it's all a mixture, this keeps the small stuff, so you've got a better surface, which keeps the water on top of the road, so it does not penetrate, and as soon as it starts penetrating, and that's.
Ice cracks.
That's our biggest enemy that you can find, is water getting through that road.
In the wintertime especially, right?
At any time, yeah, well, yeah, if it works its way into summer, and then water gets under there in the winter, it blows it out. And now you've got a pothole, and we're patching, and we're right back at square one, so this is a preventative maintenance step that will preserve the integrity of the surface, which keeps, up top, it's good, underneath's good, my theory, anyway.
I have something I want to say, Dan, I know you probably know all about it, but I just happened to have had a conversation, and I know that you're, you're, I call him, you're Senator Rogers, who's the DPW director.
I was with him Saturday.
Yeah, well, he, I'm told, is, is, because he's been part of that, uh, pavement saving project.
That's your come up deck, so.
Yes, he, he is using this technique as a DPW director, and Foster, I learned that today, just coincidentally, just learned.
And this is just a request to go out to bid, you can see what comes back, and go from there.
Right, we don't have to pull the trigger on that, but I do highly recommend it.
It's a new.
I make a motion that, uh, we allow the DPW to go out to bid for the fog sealing asphalt emulsions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item, Public Works Department, request for approval, pavement preservation management agreement. This was approved at the financial town meeting, and it's by Beta, it was on the state bid list.
Yeah.
Uh, I met with Senator Rogers on Saturday, he brought me down all this pap, paperwork that he had. And he had, Foster is using this program, he had it all in a binder, and it's pretty neat how they've done it, it's, it's scoring everything.
Like they already have had.
They have a template, they have a product.
Oh, he had it, he got it all in a binder.
They already received these services.
Because it started out, I called him Saturday morning over this, this is gonna tie in with this too. Uh, it was his legislation that got approved, the governor took credit for it, and Rob's already working with that. They don't, the opening date is August 15th, we guaranteed them 128,000, and Senator Rogers had the breakdown, there's a second awarding in the same year, it's a two-year program.
Yeah.
We're gonna be probably equal to Foster, about 400,000 dollars this year, and 400,000 next year. It could be used on existing stuff that you've got in the pipeline, which helped us with the three-year capital improvements, but this really helps. We can also, I asked him, because like, we were doing the budget with prices of asphalt, and we end up with more chip sealing, you'll be able to upgrade to asphalt on some of these projects, if it's eligible under that program. But by using this Beta program, which you read at the top, I mean, it was, everything was there when you were showing it, so. So I'll make it a motion to, without, to approve, go out for, request for approval, pavement preservation management agreement with Beta Engineering.
But I think we are approving it tonight.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was approved at financial town meeting, was it a separate line item, was it?
No, it's, it's, it's that one I made an error for the 50.
Yeah.
It's a capital program.
It's a capital.
Capital program.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's one-time funding in it, this, this particular, just for that item?
25 grand or something like that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So there's a second?
And there's a second, and, and just I'd like to say, as you know this, I think, uh, it was Senator Rogers working also in concert with the Association of DPW Directors, because he's proud of that. And I understand our own former DPW director had a lot to do with helping to make that happen, so we also think, you know. Yes, no?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Exeter Public Library requesting Rob to bid carpet replacement. Are you?
All grant funds, we'll give the champion.
Okay, there's a motion.
So move, uh, you want to bid for the carpet replacement at the Exeter Public Library?
Second.
No courtists.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Exeter Public Library requesting Rob to bid automatic door opens.
I'll make a motion to go out to bid for the automatic door opens for the Exeter Public Library, also paid for by a great.
Sherlock, um, Santa, for people with disabilities, in a, in an automatic door thing, we just have to pay for somebody to install it, somebody to wire it, and I think the library board of directors is gonna take that up.
Yeah, that's what it says here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, L, Request the Town Sergeant's Office to increase in detail rates.
Move to approve consideration.
Second.
Discussion, very discussion.
Well, it's been about five years since the last time we went up, uh, I'm only going up $2, if, uh, you do have a piece of paper there showing the, the rates from surrounding departments, just trying to be competitive with some of, you know, I don't want to lose any of my constables to other departments, because they do have reserves, Mike and I talked earlier about this, about the reserves that they have, a lot of them are retired police officers, a lot of them are retired firefighters, uh, there was one from DEM that works over in South Kingston. Um, I already had one of my constables actually talking about jumping ship and going back to Westlake, where he lives, because they're, they're getting $60 an hour over there.
And this is the, the contractors, or whoever needs you pays this?
Correct, it has nothing to do with the town, this is just, when, when we work for a vendor, that's what they're paying us.
Yeah.
Well, when I, we write the check, and they reverse us, they'll go.
Correct, the check comes in, I, I bill them, Verizon National Grid, or Rhode Island Energy now, or whatever company that we're working for, pays me, the town of Exeter, I break it down, who worked that day, and I, I give it to Maria, so she takes whatever, the vehicle out there that made, for the vehicle replacement fund, she puts that in that amount, and then she, I break it down for whatever individual was working that day, and that's what they get. So I make, I make her like a little easier, so she's not just getting a check and going, all right, who gets what?
What portion of that 50, say it was up to 48, what do you say, up to 50, 48 to 50 dollars? What portion does the constable get, what portion?
They get the whole 50.
They get the whole.
What, how does the town, what is the town's money come into play, above that?
Because the vendors pay for use of the equipment.
Yeah, that's a separate line item?
Right, so it's, it's a pass-through.
Okay.
For, um, for them, it's a pass-through, so they get exactly what we bill, the guys do.
Right.
And then there is a vehicle replacement fund, if they wind up using our vehicles, that goes into the vehicle replacement fund, that's a separate charge.
Who does that charge?
Uh.
Well, that's fair, right now, we're getting $30 an hour, but the state of Rhode Island gets 20, that's across the board for every town and city, if you, if you do anything for the state of Rhode Island.
They get 20?
They get 20. We get 30 for any other vendor.
The town or, okay, the state will pay 20, okay.
Okay.
Do other towns pay more?
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, as far as what, the detail rate, or?
The $30, the.
Oh, yeah, then there are other departments getting 40, 50, oh, yeah.
Because that, see, I had it highlighted down here, like, why is it only 30?
Well, he's moving ahead, but you don't want to move too quickly.
That's fine, that's good, if this is your recommendation.
I, I, I just have to comment that I, I think the initiative Scott takes is commendable, because he's, he's already created the new posting of rates, so once we approve it, it's all ready to go, I mean no offense, I think that's very smart.
Soon as it's done, it's, it's being mailed out to all the vendors, so they.
And then I have just one more question, is it also, um, like, protocol, or whatever you want to call it, for the one-hour call-out, like, don't, like, I feel like that's a short time.
Well, I, I was, it is a short time, in fact, we had a detail this morning, and DOT called, like, an hour and 15 minutes before the detail started to cancel it because of the rain this morning, so, I mean, so I had to call the guy and tell him, hey, I hope you're not on the road yet, because they just canceled, so.
Like, you can't do that at a doctor's office, like, you need 24 hours.
But the thing is, with, with construction, you just never know.
Yeah, 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 I'll give you that.
I mean, if they're already there, they get four hours.
Okay.
So you have a motion?
Sure. Oh, and I, I made one, I think.
She seconded it, so we.
All we have to do is discuss until.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And, Town of Exeter and Town of West Greenwich, Exeter, West Greenwich, Regional School District, joint resolution in support of clarifying section 5E of Public Law, 1965, chapter B, approving and ratifying the agreement between the towns of Exeter and West Greenwich, Rhode Island, with respect to the formation of a regional school district with amendments incorporated there. Who wants to explain that with the demo?
Yeah, okay, you've all seen these proposed, and that's all it is, is a proposed, um, resolution that has been presented by the lawyer for, um, these, um, the West Greenwich, uh, the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District. Um, I, and appears to have been endorsed favorably by the solicitor for West Greenwich. Um, I simply pass it on to you, but so that you understand the language, you could go either, or you could, what they're asking you to do is, um, is to agree outside of the language of the chart to. of the chart to a, an agreed solution as to how the parties, the two towns and the, and the district, will construe an instance like, like that which happened a couple of years ago. You might recall what happened there was, the district failed to pass a budget. The state law and the charter both say that if they fail to pass a budget, they have X amount of days to call a new referendum for the people to come in and to try to pass a new one. And then what the charter says, section five E., I believe, says, if that fails, you go to the state law, which is put out in general law sixteen dash twenty-three dash something or other. When you read that law, what the law says, this is in the case where they failed to have a budget and they failed to get an amended budget done. What that section says is that you then look at the last budget that was approved and you have the town, the towns pay the same proportionate amount that they did at that time. You, you don't have a new head count of kids. You go with exactly what it was. That's what the state law, that's what the charter says, okay? So we, we, they, we, we were sued by the district.
They sent a bill like three or four months, thirty-five grand.
More than, right, thirty-five thousand more.
Is that the potential of that?
We counterclaimed and said, not only are you wrong, but there really is no question of fact here. And in those kind of cases, you're entitled to attorney's fees, and it's a contractual matter. So we counterclaimed for attorney's fees, for them putting us through this when it seems so obvious as to what the law said. After that happened, I think they had a new solicitor, change of solicitors, and shortly after that, we got inquiry as to whether or not we would agree to a mutual dismissal of all claims. And it'd be over. Hence, the challenge to what we did went away. And everyone agreed that the formula, as we paid it, stood. My legal opinion was, still is, that's what the charter says you do. Now, they apparently understand that because now they're asking you to construe it according to section six D. Now, you should all look at that, okay? What that says, that's the, that's the formula that you first set up the budget for. And you say, okay, Exeter has, you know, a thousand kids and, and, and West Greenwich has nine hundred kids, and therefore Exeter pays more. And, and you have to do that, that's, that's what you must do. So they want, they wanted us to agree that if everything goes to hell in a handbasket and they can't get a budget approved by people of the district, then we will agree to have that formula rather than the one the charter and the state law says. Now, that's perfectly legal. So it becomes a, and quite frankly, if you think about it, the way the populations go, it can shift from time to time. A big subdivision here, a big subdivision there, in one town or the other, it can swing it. And it can swing it wildly. So it could help us to do this eventually. But you would need to agree to do that. But right now, I'm not sure that it does help you, like, if it was to be put into effect now and that happened, I think.
But Jim, is this only in the event that a budget isn't?
Yes, yes.
Only if it fails.
So read that charter, read that resolution, understanding, you ought to, I just want you to understand the issues and what the law says. And then you can agree to do that. I mean, it's perfectly legitimate for you to say, okay, we'll go with that, with that thing. It's, you know, we think it's more fair to do that. It's up to you. Right now, that's what the charter says, that's what the law says, as far as I'm concerned. And so you, you, you can, but anyone, party school contract and agree with a, with a separate contract to amend it.
But then the, the, no, the charter was amend, no, amended it to do that five percent, no, five year.
Yeah, that's a different thing, five year.
Right, no, but would that not have an effect on the solush?
Yeah.
My feeling is Libra will want Libra for this right now.
You don't need to make a decision in time. I think you should look at, quite frankly, and make it, say, it's a true policy decision you should make, as to whether or not you want to change that.
We should ask him to, to wipe that out so that everyone has the.
I could, I could write out a memo for it that says what the law says, in my opinion. I could do that for you.
The one you just, the one you just explained?
Yeah, the one I just explained.
Yeah.
I can, as a matter of fact, I can send you, I can send you my brief. That was, I, I can send you.
We have all the information.
Yeah, Mike, I can send you the, the counterclaim that we brought, which lays it out perfectly. And the state law, what the state law says, and what each section of the, of the, of Exeter West Greenwich Charter says, which is what we have to operate on. And, and so I'll send you that, and you can read that. You should read that before you act because then you will understand precisely what they're asking you to do. You need to understand that first before you act. So then you make your decision on the policy. Another thing, of course, is, there's no reason, I don't think, as to why the, the school district couldn't seek to amend the charter and go to a referendum. I don't know. That's another thing they're not seeking to do here. All they're seeking to do is ask town councils to come, come into a sort of an agreement as to how they're going to construe the charter.
But only about that.
Charter doesn't need construction, but you could do that.
But only about that attendance issue, right? I mean, in other words, whatever, if the kids, if the shift of kids creates a lesser burden for us and more for the, for the town, so it'd be, and if it's.
If, if you read the resolution, what it says is, you got to read the sections that they're cited, because you wouldn't know by just reading. What it says is that in the event of, of, of happening, of a, of a, of a section D., six D., okay? Then we are going to construe it according to section five E., okay?
Well, we don't know what's down here.
Yeah.
So you got to understand what context they're asking for. And what, what that means is.
We don't know.
That the argument they made two years ago and decided to dismiss in the face of a counterclaim for attorney's fees.
They did get a brief, which was.
Well, it didn't even have to get that far. It was our counterclaim, I think, that did it. And so they, they decided to drop that, and somehow the ball got rolling again. I think the solicitor, the old solicitor is out, but the old one is, the old one is back in, I think, and, and maybe that's what spurred it, I don't know. But in it, it's not out of, it's not, again, I'm not casting aspersions on the request, but I just want you to understand what the request is so you could then make your policy determination.
I would change.
You mean, continue to next one?
In the meantime, I'll get you a copy of my answer to the complaint and the attachments to the site, but everything I said, that's what it said, so I can get that to you, send you a big memo.
All right. Let me continue. Next, June communication number twenty, protect the C D A zone and that's a violation.
That's me. I just, I just asked because, now, this was a communication that came through in June, and as you know, it wasn't, I couldn't attend that meeting, was hospitalized, but just as I, as I read this, I know there are a number of issues here that were raised during the hearings that we held on the ordinance that was adopted. The, the questions on the taxation issue, the, the on page six and beyond, yeah, they're concerned, they were concerned to me that night, they were concerned to Carrie, someone else had spoken more than once, one, I think. So my, my question tonight is simply that I would like to pass this communication over to Jim and just ask him if he would review it at some point, and then, because plenty of other issues on our table right now, but I'm just asking if he would look through it, if he has any comments on any of these questions that were raised here. And that's what I'm asking. And if there's no objection, I'm going to do that. If there's an objection, I'll put it to a motion.
I'll give it to Jim. You need a motion to give it to Jim?
I don't. I would say with counsel, unless there's objection, but again, I just wanted to like to pass this on to Jim and ask if he would review it. And it's not number one because it's a lot of other things here that we're addressing. I understand that. But Jim, you probably have to want me to give you a, you've got a copy of it, actually.
I don't, Jim. You have.
I have one.
You have mine. There you go, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Unfinished business number ten, A., use of American Rescue Plan ad funds possible to build a new town hall or is possible purchase of buildings. Pay my bro. That is executive session?
Yes.
Okay. B., July two thousand twenty-two, communication number fifteen, Governor Key, Rhode Island, capital projects fund, multipurpose community facilities matching grant. That's.
So we did get word that we were awarded the, the amount that we had asked for, but I did call her to see if, if the project that we originally were setting money aside for, if that doesn't go forward, could it be applied elsewhere? We have to forfeit it? Could it be applied to a different site? And I don't have, I, no, she doesn't have, I don't, I don't think she knows, but she's going to try to find out.
Okay, so we'll leave it there. Okay. C., Split Rock Mobile Park, request of electric inspection and the governor to obtain a news report, require violations to be corrected timely. And I have two of the same thing. Trailer park license renewal application to Split Rock Road, Spark Forty, South County Trail. There was a little bit of correspondence there.
It's thirty-two weeks.
He did patch the potholes, the poles, but the poles are there.
There are more potholes. Yeah, there are more potholes. Rocks, it needs to be addressed.
Why, I talked to Ron, Ron, I think it was Monday, Tuesday, he sends me a text message, he went to inspect it, he was, I couldn't believe it, he's patching the potholes and stuff.
Some of them, apparently, but.
But the poles still aren't up, so I don't know. He said, he said, redim.
He said, the end of August.
I, I have a question. Kids are possible to, would it be feasible or possible for us to take some action that doesn't go, that puts us in a position of, oh, I don't know, strength, stronger position and just keep moving it forward? I mean, I don't know the process of setting poles, and they seem, it seems to be done a lot, so I don't know why I can't be.
The poles are there.
I don't, the poles are there, so I suppose maybe next year, then the poles can be put in place. I'm just saying, I don't know. It's easy, I'm kidding.
They're going to do it by the end of August.
Beg your pardon?
What are the chances?
Well, I mean, maybe, it says the end of August, yeah, somewhere. Well, it's not, August isn't over yet, we still have days to go.
Who did you put to the end of August? And you directed me to invite him in February to.
To September? Oh, what did you hear? Oh, where is that?
I've done that.
Oh, you've done that? So they're invited to come and meet with us in September? So I'd say the council wishes to reiterate the request, we need to see them in September. I'm just saying that, right? I mean, it's big, well.
I guess we give him his last chance at the September meeting and then.
Like, I feel like we need to find out who, like, who did he contract to put in the polls? Like, who did he call to put in those polls?
Yeah, P S., who's the poll man? I mean, I don't, just.
There have been permits pulled.
I beg your pardon?
There have been permits pulled, so that would indicate who is doing that. Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, we can have that by September, so, you know.
No, that's.
Well, no, but I know that we can say. What, please? Oh, there you go, so we already know.
Michael Martin.
Oh. Well, maybe the town manager, purchasing agent, and personnel director could call.
I don't think we have such a position.
All right, so we're.
I guess we'll leave it on there for one more.
Continuing it.
I was trying to find this email, I can't find this there. Okay. Town of Exeter Code Ordinance is chapter fourteen, Buildings and Building Regulations are for impact fees. That one here, Jim's going to review all the stuff that we got from the consultant last week.
Right, and as for additional information.
Do you have more?
And suggestions, I have.
I'd like to thank profusely Ken and the consultant for both saying, well, I think it sounds like a good idea, but I'm not a lawyer. So it ends up with Jim apparently having to make the decision on it. And I, I told Ken, I wish that I was a judge, and I wish that what everybody said was, I can't make a, I, I, I would like to do it, but I'm not a judge, because that's who's going to determine it, not Jim. And I would be able to say the same thing. Here's my opinion, but I'm not a judge. Because it's not an easy question, so I'll take a look at it, I'll be happy to, but picking and screaming, I'll take a look at it as soon as I have, as soon as I have a chance to have a good thorough look.
The longer you take, the more ideas you come up with now.
Certainly, I haven't come up with a solution since Friday when I got.
Okay.
I spent a weekend out.
No, I was sick.
Town emails and records official staff boards, care commissions.
Well, what should we do about it, if anything? We got the, let's dug up the ordinance that we.
We have been, I've.
Thank you, and we got the, we got, it says here, we made a motion, November twenty-two, to provide council, planning, and zoning board members and the zoning inspector with town emails. And it's not after the next election, which was past election. So we are somewhat doing it. Then they say they refuse to do it. Provide council, okay, planning, zoning board members, and zoning inspector. That's what we did. Can we, can, is there something we, somebody had an idea, was, I don't know if we did yet, can we instruct the town employees that they can't respond to anything that's not from a town email?
What did you have on that list, like five or six people?
At least six, maybe, maybe seven or eight, I don't know. Let's see. It's about that, maybe a little more. We made the ordinance, we probably should try to do something before, so probably put a little water, it would be more of a copy of the ordinance.
Just like there's ordinances for Split Rock too, Mike, and we should be enforcing those things, enforcing people to do things and to hold people accountable. There's a policy, there's email policy.
Could I, could I suggest that perhaps, you, you, someone mentioned maybe a message to these people, but if that's the case, what I think the message should include is the reason why this is required, and, and it's the public records issue that has been addressed. Do you, do you know what I'm saying? Like, somebody just said, you need to do this. Well, it's funny, and you need to do it because it becomes a question of public record, which I believe is, is the case.
They just did the training, certification for public records, and they said that you shouldn't be using your personal for town business, you shouldn't be using your personal phones for town business.
Okay. Well, so, okay, my point then.
We shouldn't be doing that.
My point, that according to the, what department does this come from? From the ethics, but I don't know, from, where do you get the training from?
Attorney generals.
From the attorney, all right. So if, if the message indicates that based, you know, per the Attorney General's Office directive, personal emails and that are not to be used for town business, as simple as that, per the Attorney General, do you, do you understand, you follow what I'm saying? It's a little bit the teacher it makes you when you play, this is why we're doing this, and if you need to know, I'll tell you why.
And in addition, we can tell the town employees not to accept emails from them, send them back saying, please use your town email, two-fold.
But if the message, you know, you say, send them. But if the mess, you know, you say, send them a message, but I say, add that to the message.
Yep.
That the Attorney General's Office, you said suggests, you say requires, what, what that suggests, okay. Well, it's like I never told kids that I would suggest they take disease, but that's a different thing, you know, I'm just kidding. What do you think about that?
Yes, it's great, which, two things, the two things, or, it's time for the second thing, too.
I would just do the first thing.
What's the first thing?
Is what he's.
We haven't done that, though. We haven't sent a letter saying the Attorney General suggests it.
Okay.
Or have we?
I totally, I totally, I thought James explained it to them.
Well, me.
But when I did write all that list, wrote them.
And you sent that.
Council directed you to do this, please contact James.
So we'll give them more explanation.
So council, but then some people say, yeah, so they're all just, that's just them. This is the Attorney General directing the clerk to tell everybody.
Yeah, 'cause you just did your training last Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yep.
So give it a shot, I mean, that might help.
And the Ethics Commission also suggests that. How many chances do you give Split Rock?
What?
Like, let's just give people a little bit of grace, is my, and I know it's frustrating because it's simple, simple thing, but these are simple things in Split Rock, do you think? So let's just give people grace, especially these people that are on this list, a lot of them are volunteers.
Split Rock isn't this a situation, is it?
It is totally a different situation.
It's negligent, I think.
It is totally different, but I'm just saying, there's enforcement issues.
You wanna, you wanna employ more patience.
A little bit.
Fine, we'll go more patience.
Because we're showing patience in this area, but we're gonna hit somebody over a base, with a baseball bat.
We're not hitting them, we're just.
Well, you don't think you're hitting them, but when you come down that hard on somebody that's volunteering for the town, they're like, what? I don't need this.
How, how, how are we coming down? I was just saying, use the email that we're providing, how is that?
If it's stronger, I think is what, I mean, if you do something more than what we've talked about.
There's a balance.
You mean, you mean sending, asking the employees to send it back and say, please use town email?
Yes.
You think that's, you think that's coming down, huh?
Yeah, that's a little bit like, why, why do I bother?
What else do we, okay, fine, maybe that's not a time for that, but what else do we have?
Yeah, and that, maybe that's the next step, but I don't think we're quite there yet, because this, this is Exeter, okay? This, and I hate that, that this is Exeter, that people use that excuse a lot, but this has only been.
Your argument makes sense.
We haven't even had, have we had a year of this yet, of the official emails?
That was, he just read from November, right, November twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I'm not saying that, like, should it be quicker, absolutely, especially in twenty-twenty-three, but this is where we are, and.
Okay, all right. Next, historic preservation, where do you go, Hall Schools?
I'm ready to go to bed, if you want.
Yes.
Okay.
So put it on next month's agenda? All right, let's, can you have something to, so we'll place on the new business, what, then we'll call it restoration, R F fees.
Yep.
Woody Hill and Hall School Restoration Projects, or something like that.
And we can throw in there the credit project of the old town hall, just to get, you don't have to go forward with it, just their price.
No, go ahead.
The respect for your senior team.
Yeah. Well, we're not gonna go.
No, we'll, we'll put it on a September agenda.
Ken go out to bed.
Well, we'll put it, we'll put it September agenda. Thanks.
Okay, item G, Director of Public Works, request for guidance, incident five, West Shore Drive.
Yeah, this, Rob has consulted with me on this problem, and it involves a number of legal issues, we have to be careful and make sure we're correct before we take an action, and that's what we're trying to sort out right now, so it's a matter that's unlegally reviewed, and I'll report back when there's a suggestion that I have.
Have we had a survey yet?
Well, it's an excellent, one of the points that I think needs to be addressed.
If I may.
There was never an as-built survey done, that's part of.
There's no survey, that's the important issue.
Sorry, sorry, I'll find you your, I think you, this, John Mitchell, I have my, my normal residence is one thirty-three West Shore, but I'm four West Shore, right across, I have a lot there for kayaks and stuff, and I do have that survey, and I have the survey here that went through zoning for when, back when, that same name, Rock Street, called D E N, but I shat too close to the water, and didn't realize the rules, so I had that whole area.
Oh, excellent, that, that, can you leave that with the town council? Or can you make a copy?
Make it, bring it in.
Would you do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, that would be very helpful?
I'll make sure to get it.
Um, I do have copies at home, but I'll just come.
Mr. Mitchell, I, that could be very helpful, so.
If you, well, and make sure you get one copied the same, so the scale's the same.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, do you have a copy, do you have that would do that?
That would do that one.
Okay. Or you can do one of them.
Where was that survey done?
This is done by.
You done this team?
Yeah.
This is not blind survey.
No. That's always good, zoning, and also D E N, that will approve all those structures, of course.
So you were, you were.
Four, four zero one, nine three two, two eight seven one.
You know, we might need to scale it, it'll probably be.
That's my biggest fear, is that we're going through that.
But that's, that's to scale.
That's from the actual field, one from.
Well, then, two people, just say something, that way you'll have that, we'll make a copy. Oh, wait a second, what difference?
Great, should be safe, yeah.
I got one sheet.
Thank you, perfect.
Good, thank you.
I got one sheet.
You know what, I got, you know what, seven, eight, two, three.
Mike, that's exactly, that's exactly.
Okay, so we're good there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, item H, rewarding a bid in Town Hall Architectural Services, do you have anything with that?
One, one pending.
Want to leave it there for one more, Mark?
No. Yeah, because we have to talk in executive session.
What's that, really?
We have to talk in executive session about the.
Okay.
You're at H.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
I, my, new, yeah, new legislative changes, the mobile app, comprehensive plan act, zoning enablement act, the land development subdivision act.
Can I speak to that? I, I wanted it left, and if you know, I also ask that Bill Douglas' cross report be removed, and basically, what he gave us, it's, it was on you. I haven't read it yet, it's on your table tonight, but it details what I could see, big issues need to be addressed, so that's why I just.
In a short amount of time.
Yeah.
I know, I know, Jim, I know.
No, no, but I've got a suggestion, actually, I read the thing, too.
Oh, you did?
And he, of course, he's right on, his analysis has always meant an amazing asset that's now. But one thing that he said, essentially what he said at the end of it was, here's my suggestions, here's what we need to do, the ordinance on the zoning side needs to be done this way, the ordinance on the subdivision side needs to be done this way, and there's a, if you, zoning side's fairly easy, 'cause everybody's gonna have to go by the same rules, but subdivision side is a little bit different, because it says that your ordinance needs to spell out for every single special exception, the different criteria for every single special exception, something that's gonna take a ton of work, okay, and it, quite frankly, it's stuff that's outside of my camp, and my office's camp, and he said, I'd love to do this, but I, I don't think it's appropriate to solicitor or someone, if, if the solicitor's office has the quote bandwidth, is the word he used, to do it, and we do not have the bandwidth to do it, we just don't, so, I, I'm telling you, I'll say out right now, what, so, because, because of the condensed timeframe, this needs to be done by next year, now, I mean, yeah, we've gotta have this done, okay? So you can't dilly-dally, that's why I'm gonna tell you what my suggestion is now, subject to what you wanna do with it. I already called a colleague, who's a solicitor in another town, a rural town like ours, largely, to find out what they were doing, whether or not they'd gotten started on it, and she told me, it's Karen Ellsworth, the solicitor in Richmond, excellent, excellent term, she has a background, she, before she was a lawyer, she was a writer for the Province Journal, and she's that way, she fact checks, she's perfect, she's one who looks at details, she's into that, and then she's been, she's made her, her reputation in the legal community largely on municipal matters. So I called her, I said, well, who are you having doing this? And she says, I'm doing it because, quite frankly, Jim, I think I'm better than all the people who call themselves experts out there. And I said, Karen, can I ask the town council if they would consider, since you're already doing this for one community, it would seem to me like you could give a good rate to the town, because you will be doing, you may have already done, a lot of the same type of work that needs to be done, excellent. So that's my suggestion, that you allow me to explore with her whether or not she would do it, and possibly give a rate, this isn't one that asks to go out for an R F P because it's a legal service, it's also, as far as I'm concerned, an emergency situation, given the timeframe, that a very, very serious job needs to be done, in a condensed period of time, and if it's not, I, I doubt that there are individuals out there who will not notice, and it would become a bigger problem for us than, than if we, if we took the bull by the horns right now, got it done, so that's what I'm suggesting.
Uh, that's, that's good, Jim, can I just say this? I, I haven't read what, what he gave us tonight, but you said something about some specific areas, or, how do you explain that? He's talked to me, and, and he, we need, he will come here, maybe we should ask him in September to come, Bill, to tell us about the back, issues of variances, I think that's the issue, where he says, just, just don't have, just don't, you know it, you've talked with him, just don't allow them, period, because each one, I don't know if that's what you were referring to.
Yes, 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 no's.
All I did was, I looked at his memo, and it seemed to say, this needs to be done by the solicitor's office, if you can, this needs to be done by the solicitor's office if you can, this needs to be done, and, and, and so, all I'm saying is, I can't.
No, no, that's, that's.
And so, that's my suggestion, get it in the hands of this woman, she's outstanding, I mean, it's up to you, certainly.
Yeah, but that's part of it, is streamlining it.
Yeah, and just say, there are some things you have to say, no, no, when I do involve these other options.
And Cal, it, it crosses over into the area that I hate most, and that is policy, because if I'm sitting there and I'm saying, okay, let's see, we're gonna say that it's a special exception to have a candy shop, okay, here's all the things that we want there, that's not my, I mean, I don't do that.
That's what he's suggesting, we may just say, no, at this point.
What Karen says is, is that if she were to do that, obviously she'd need somebody like Bill to input on all those kind of issues, tell me about the town, what are they, you know, what do they do in this zone, why is it they want, and then she will develop that, and so.
Yeah.
Well, they're gonna be in the same boat as us, and from what I understand, if.
She's doing it already.
Yeah, but they can say no, because the variance thing is really a sticky thing, like you're saying, they have to spell out every last little bit.
Special exception.
Yeah, and for right now, when we're trying to get all our ducks in a row.
Exactly, and, and the subdivision regulations, too, they have to be rewritten, and that has to, you need a subdivision person there that knows policy, and that's Bill. So he's got to, they have to work in very close combination to get this done, he has to be able to rely on the legal expertise of the person doing it, and she's got to rely on the local knowledge of the person that's giving it to her, because she is then gonna present it to the town council, and obviously the town council's gonna state whether you like the policies that are stated in these things, before you adopt it, so I mean, there's, there's a bunch of hoops that need to be gone, gone through before we do this. Now, who knows, maybe the, the general assembly goes out and gives everybody another year to get it done, I mean, that's happened in the past, but you end up waiting until last second, and praying that they do that, so if you can do it now, just.
Well, and that's why Bill, I know, has said in the planning board, in the zoning board, everybody's like freaking out over this, they're like, we need to get something, even if it's not perfect.
Right.
Out there, absolutely.
Yeah, out there, and then you can revisit.
And so, what if we place, I mean, what if we, the next September agenda, we place an item that says hi, um, hiring, uh, oh, no, right.
Legal consultant to work with, with planning.
Consultant, and we invite also Bill to come speak to us about what he sees this process.
Can I, can I share with Karen Ellsworth what you're saying? So, I mean, she's obviously not hired at this point, but we really, yeah, I mean, talking about September, we're now another month down the road without having anything, okay, other than people saying, we need somebody, I mean, really.
And we already budgeted.
We put money in the budget for it.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Well, then we ought to, well, that's why it's, what is it, I change it.
There's, there's, Bill and Karen know about each other yet?
Oh, yeah.
Not really, I'm sure that Bill knows who Karen is, Karen definitely knows who Bill is, so, I mean, it's, look, professionals know who the other, who the professionals are that are out there, who's good, and I'm sure that they both, I can't imagine that either one would have anything bad to say, I can't imagine, you know, it's possible, I suppose, but, but quite frankly, you know, Joe says, Bill has, I've never heard a bad word about anybody from that gentleman, he's, he's the ultimate fit for that, but I also know when he appreciates good work.
Class act.
He's absolutely class act, and he, he appreciates good work, and, and so.
Well, let's move on to our, all right.
I agree.
Yes. How are we moving forward?
Stop asking, give me the authority to call Karen, to ask her for a proposal, that we can have, I would get it immediately.
Should we, should, I just throw in a second, should we, should we, could that be subject to positive feedback from Bill maybe tomorrow?
Absolutely, well, all she'll do is give you a proposal, and then Bill, you get, you get feedback from Bill, or, or whoever you want on the proposal, so, what's that look?
Well, I'm saying, if you can have a proposal, we're having a special meeting at two o'clock until sixteen.
Well, I was just gonna say.
It's good, yeah.
Can we?
And we need.
I promise it'll only be one thing on the agenda.
Yeah, but Bill, but, 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 but.
Well, she's got a post on the agenda.
But Bill's gonna be here that day anyway.
Yeah, Bill's gonna be here that day also.
So let's see if Karen might have something for that day, what is that, a week from Wednesday?
She will.
Wonderful.
Are most of us able to?
It sounds like, it sounds like a score for us, like, drop in a lap, Jim, thank you.
She's really good.
I moved, I moved it way direct, so, Jim, to, to discuss with Karen the possibility of working for us.
So Henry Ford, they called, Henry Ford, they said he was an idiot, and he said, well, I might not know, he answered all the problems, but I know who to pick up and who to call on my phone, and that's similar to what you just did, with something outside of your bandwidth, that you knew someone.
Please, I've learned that when I go outside of my bandwidth, I end up paying for it much more than if I just came to conclusion early.
It's hard to say it upfront, but it's much easier overall.
Learned it's not hard at all.
Okay, all in favor of Cal's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next up, the force of offices, boards, and committees, Ken?
We're still working with Lori on the E M A and O U's.
Pardon me, we skipped something, didn't we?
We did.
No, we did, Al, Al, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah, boy, I skipped a lot.
You did.
Wow, ahead of myself, 'cause I had a check mark in, we did that one.
So we totally keep it on the.
Yeah.
So J, public access.
Well, I had a check mark in Al, 'cause we did that first, no, public access, zoning certificates, letters, sorry. Public access, don't make certificates letters, sorry. That type of guy.
Yeah, that's probably not ever going anywhere because Hal's just gonna do what he does. He can't not fill out the certificates the right way and put them online, but you can take that off the agenda.
Okay. Well, hang on a minute. Can we, what can we do about that? Can we do anything? What was it?
I got an email that you had some of these out of the way or something.
Well, some stuff's available, and you said, right, some things, but not.
The, he's, when he does them, I don't know about completely fill them out. He does them, he scans them, he sends them to Dixie. Dixie puts them in a zoning or if they pertain to a zoning or a planning application, she puts them in those files. But she also puts them in a file by year. She has them going way back, so anybody needing one just needs to ask.
So they can, so they can get anything from Hal?
Yeah.
So it's good.
I mean.
Well, I wish they were a lot of, were accessible online and also.
Well, like I said, we can have them all scanned to a repository in our website if we want James to do that. They don't have to be.
Yeah, it's good.
That's all. You know, because when she receives them, she can put them up on the website.
Yeah, that that would be ideal.
That would be James.
Mm-hmm.
So it sounds like a lot, I don't, I don't know, a lot of bandwidth.
I mean, how many years you wanna go back, if that's the question, not that.
Why don't we start with like three and then go forward? Just to have an idea about it.
I wonder how many that would be.
How many that would be? Can I, can I be that name?
I think so.
Yeah?
Could be a lot.
Yeah?
Do you have companies that?
And yes, they do.
Even if we started right now and did it moving forward.
Let's do that.
We have to check with James.
That's it, Beth.
Website has this ability.
So can we?
So we're not creating more work by going backwards than we do it going forward.
That's good.
Start.
Yeah, start now. Can we ask Jim about this? Can you ask Jim about this, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next is Kay, Exeter Clark's office, going to the Second Force Office.
So I got feedback from Rob, and apparently Dixie now isn't for this because she's taken into consideration the other people upstairs who don't like the idea because they feel it's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just on this quarter, but it's like cla- it's like claustrophobic.
It can be claustrophobic.
And so she's okay with going along with not doing anything. So I'd like to take this off the agenda, if you guys are okay with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I spoke about, so getting ready to just, but I don't, I'm not sure it's gonna be all that.
Well, that's, it's noisy everywhere in this town hall.
Item L, we already discussed. See, I did, Mike, I checked that.
Yes, you did.
Yeah. Okay, now Ken, number eleven, reports of offices, boards and committees.
I'm just helping draft, drafting the MOU in the, for the Exeter in West Greenwich, EMA agreement. And then also helping Dory with the RFP to walk the bid for the services. And you'll see all that before it happens. I don't believe, has anybody seen the, the grant agreement yet from Lima? So that's gonna be number one, that you see that.
Uh, but you have, did you try to, okay, well, I wanted to, I was gonna speak to her report as we spoke today. Sign on probably recently you spoke to her.
Email a couple times.
Oh, okay. Well, we go ahead, I won't interrupt you.
No, this will.
Well, only because.
I lost my train of thought.
Well, you're talking about the grants for the, I turned up the MOU and stuff between the two towns.
In the font, the font and the sources, Lima.
Yeah, she she said that they've put on hold or something, she told me today.
She didn't tell me that.
Well, you know, there could be something in this report.
Okay.
But always useful interruptions, sir.
Shh, shh. Okay. Um, and then a couple of policies we do.
Next item?
Then Jim's got the rest.
All right, true. Uh, solicitors' report.
Okay, I'm happy to report that you can reduce by one the number of cases listed under Executive Session fourteen A one.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Because we had a Supreme Court decision, but roundly, was roundly in favor of the town.
Which item was that?
Fourteen A one.
A one.
It was a moratorium case.
So now it's seven.
Yeah, that would've been rather interesting impact on the town, heavy, but so, uh, we won't, all around. So that's good news.
And they can't come back with that, anything else?
Not, well, they already have an action from the Superior Court where they're claiming that the three, it's a little complicated, but the three, they're, they had a total of six submissions at one point. Uh, three of them had progressed to the master plan application stage, and they were vested under the two thousand and fifteen ordinance. What they then did was they said they wanted to put those on hold, which Ashley agreed to. Of course, Green got passed. They then put in an appli, what they called a new application, called it a new application under Green for three of those three vested projects.
Yes.
So while they were vested under the two thousand and fifteen, they decided basically to put in new applications, which Bill, Bill de Pasquale believes were replacements. So therefore, the vestment was gone because there was a new ordinance in place, there were new requirements. They were going with that new ordinance. And that's when all this stuff happened, council changes, the moratorium put in, Solar Nine gets put in. Now, it's been, what, two, three years since Solar Nine's been in effect? And what they did was they, they knew they were gonna lose on the applications that never were vested under Green.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that, those are that, those three applications. And what they've done is they've claimed, oh, well, wait a minute, we still have those three that were vested under two thousand and fifteen. Now, Bill, and they presented that to Bill and said, let's go forward with these now.
And that's where he's.
And that's why Bill said, wait a minute, those are abandoned, those are replaced. No, I'm not gonna, no. You need to, you know, you're gonna need to start with a new application now under the new ordinance. And of course, they're fighting that. They brought a suit against us, that's the latest suit that was brought in Superior Court.
But this moratorium case is.
Moratorium, oh, we won.
But there's no more remedies for it.
That's correct. Now, there's still gonna be some things, they're gonna be arguing that in that moratorium case,
Yeah.
they, these three cases were were carved out. And and she, they're correct on it. They were carved out because the three had been replaced. So there was no need to talk about vesting for them.
Yeah.
Had they been vested, had they moved those along under the two thousand and fifteen, they would've been not only vested, but possibly approved by now. But they let it go. So Bill's position and the solicitor believes, solicitor's office believes that it's a very strongly taken position that that they've replaced those and therefore, they're not, they're not, you can't just throw in a new application and say, but we're, we're gonna head drop bets and see what happens.
Yeah.
If we lose on the new application, we're gonna go back.
We'll come back to the other one.
So so that's gonna be the issue, okay? So that's gonna be in front of the Superior Court and then the Supreme Court. We tried to knock that one out on a pre-answer. You have to answer within a certain time. If you think it should be knocked out on the law without anything further, you bring a motion to dismiss. We brought a motion to dismiss, it's called Rule twelve C. And Judge, Judge Taff Carter, who has been not happy with twelve C motions denied, with basically without any, any opinion. Yeah, just about denied. All that means is the case moves forward, we have to go through discovery, that kind of stuff. And then we'll bring a motion for summary judgment. We will. I can say that to everybody, believe me. We'll bring a motion for summary judgment once enough discovery has been done to get us done. So I guess that's what's happening. So, um, there's your answer. It, yes, it's it's killed those three projects entirely because they cannot seek a solar farm in a residential zone nowadays. Uh, and and that's what they need to do, can't do under solar line.
Yeah.
But the other three, the question now is, are they, can they enforce the vestment that they had back in two thousand seventeen? Before they put in their own ordinance, decided to pursue that instead and then claim, but wait a minute, we still have that one in our back pocket in case we lose this. That's where, that's where we're struggling, that's what the issue would be. And so that, that's still potentially a lot. If if by chance they prevail on it, it's gonna be a much, much smaller operation than it ever would've had under Green. So even at that, it's, it can, it will be the type.
Yeah.
Size that was going to win. But I think, I think Bill's struggling to play the truth, and so we're, we're defending his position on it. Until somebody tells me I shouldn't.
You know, I'd just like to say that that Supreme Court decision, like you shared a week ago Friday, a week ago this past Friday, what what impressed me, you find, find, decide the fact that the town prevailed, was it was so, it was so much documentation, so many cases that were cited in that decision that I begin to understand why it took years to receive the decision. But some of that information handled that provided by your, your office.
The judge that wrote it was Judge Long. She's the new, she's a new, not the newest, Judge Prada, Lynch Prada is the newest justice, but Justice Long is is pretty new, I think, within the last year and a half or so. She, I thought she did a magnificent job. But the thing that I actually had spoken with the, the attorney who handled the appeal for Green, outstanding appellate attorney, maybe the best in the state, Lauren Green, or Lauren Jones, rather. And Lauren couldn't understand why we hadn't received the decision yet because it seemed to be going our way and all the cases that have been argued on the same day as ours had been decided by months. And so he said, there's only one explanation for this, there's gonna be a dissent. Which means one of the judges or two of the judges don't agree, and they're taking their time, riding their side of the business. And I, of course, didn't wanna hear that because if one dissent, you never know, you persuaded who and how many. And it came out, it was unanimous decision in our favor. So we were both wrong. I don't know why they took that amount of time, but I thought it was a pretty magnificent. Of course, when you win, you always think it's a magnificent decision. But it it did move the ball. I tell you, if people wanna know how to do a moratorium, they just look at what exit rule. And that case, because they basically said, and we had very good lawyers arguing against this, making very novel arguments.
Well, I.
And so.
I didn't interrupt you earlier when you mentioned Karen Ellsworth, but but I'm not sure that Dan will remember, of course, but I'm not sure the two ladies realize that you two were together on the Browning Mill case.
Right, I should, yeah.
So when you say she has.
We worked together on things before, usually because she's not a litigator and she knows I, at one point, I loved litigation. Particularly municipal litigation. Now it's not so much fun. But she, uh, she, she, when she had a conflict, would contact me. And so when this came up, the first person I called was her because I know her background, I know what she does. And I know her very well, I've known her for years, there's no question about that. And it's, I would not recommend to you someone who I think was very good at what they do. So that's the story. The other thing is in executive session.
Okay, reports, new consent agenda. Uh, Cal, you had emergency management and town planner, I believe.
I did. Uh, and 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 Lori and I had quite a conversation today about a couple of things, several things. One of the things she said, and I don't, I didn't see it here in her report this year yet, but some funding has been held up, so it's not coming through, but I don't know. I thought it was maybe what you were speaking of, but then, you know, she spoke about the, the issue with West Greenwich and doing some doing work, you're helping a little. But the other thing, just note, as I, she had mentioned this, and you'll see on the back of her report that she's given you a copy of the certificate of completion. And she has now received a certificate from the National Emergency Management Basic Academy, twenty-first day of July, and she means that she has completed work at the Emergency Management Institute. So she's really trying very hard, you know, to get herself in a position where she can speak and address and help us. And I just wanted to mention that. And as far as Bill's report, we've already spoken about it.
Okay. Uh, Mike, you had tax.
Yes, wanna read a couple of statements. This one from the tax assessor's report. All residential, commercial and business personal property appeal applications must be submitted to the tax assessor's office by the deadline of Friday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And then from the tax collector's office, taxpayers have started paying on the twenty twenty-three tax bill. Payments for the first quarter are due by September fifteenth to avoid penalties. And she has started compiling a list for the next tax sale. Please let it be known that if taxpayers still have outstanding twenty twenty-two taxes, now is the time to clear up those balances.
Okay. All right, Olivia had Department of Social Services.
Yes, I just wanted to get out there that the Department of Social Services is having a back-to-school, um, school supply drive that you can drop stuff off at the town hall or at the library. And then if you need school supplies or know somebody that needs school supplies, August nineteenth, from ten to twelve at Exeter Chapel. Right? Yeah. And bring your proof of residency.
Okay, any other administrative issues?
I had one, um, and I received this from the state, from Lynn. Exeter gets four hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. I just was trying to figure out what this was for, pardon my ignorance. What is that? The four hundred and fifty thousand, the four forty-nine, sixteen, from the state pandemic recovery offices?
That's the green. That was the match.
The one you spoke of earlier tonight? Okay, I thought so, but I wasn't sure. So that's the money that is question mark, whether we're gonna actually be able to, thank you.
Okay, communication, Mike, you had number four.
All right, so number four, I know that you wanted to pull that tonight, so that's why I pulled it. Uh, I don't know if there's two, two points of discussion on this. The first one is the claim, is a claim for additional labor fees, I think. The second one is from James, and it's about insurance clause. And he wants to, instead of naming it as, let me just read it. Indicating how the town placed on their liability policy as named insured, as opposed to whatever they.
No, no, Mike, that, those are two different things.
Those are two different things?
Yeah.
Shouldn't be additional insurance.
That's official.
No, 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 no. I think, is number, number four not the transglobal claim, claiming that they're owed twelve thousand dollars? Because.
Mix them up?
They were called, yeah, they were called back to, to do, to finish the job. And when they did, they said, aha, that's extra labor.
Yeah, that's odd.
It's real odd, so, and even if they did that, now they've just made a demand for arbitration, uh, which, which came in, we, we have to respond to. So I'll tell you this, I've already asked, uh, Tian and Ken to get me everything they have on it. Lynn's also got me everything she has. I think I have a pretty good handle on the claim. Simply, it's gonna, it's gonna come down to not only the amount that they're, well, if they, if they're entitled to anything, and if so, what amount? And quite frankly, talk to Ken about this. Everything that they are asked, or they're calling extra labor, is within what was called out in a very simple bid. That is to, to strip and refurnish the windows, correct, basically, and the doors.
It looks so bad that I spent hours on that video, photographing the whole.
And so they.
The finished product?
Yeah.
Not the finished product?
Well, they thought it was.
So the finished product that they did is poor.
Horrible.
It's body work.
Oh, you said, well, you said.
It's the best it's gonna be right now. We made them come back and fix.
No, it's fine now.
It's better, it's, it's not what you would want in your house, it's acceptable.
When they claimed, they, when they said, look, we, we're done. When they claimed, they, when they said, look, we, we're done, here's our final bill, everybody that was on the team at the time said, wait a minute, this is.
This is a lousy.
Everybody did, said that independently too, we didn't get together.
So they came back, they finished it according to what everybody said, everyone at least to their satisfaction, and then they said, here's our bill for the extra labor you made us do. So that's gonna be the issue, essentially. And what we have to do now, you know, we have to go through, there is an arbitration clause or statute that says that on a public works thing like that, if the person.
I told Rob, you don't want me to go near this guy.
You know these people?
No.
You should've listened to this.
So in any.
What I read is bogus claims.
That's all I know.
Get it.
Never.
Well, he looks for twenty percent overhead, and then additional twenty percent profit on this. And maybe it's worth it.
We have a ten-day period, we have a ten-day period to respond from the time we got our demand for arbitration. I could fool around and say, wait a minute, they haven't waited the forty days you have to do before you give a notice. I can do all that stuff. Just end up costing you more time. So I would suggest that we go right into arbitration. It, Lynn got hers, and I think that's the appropriate person to get, she just got it the other day. But I do have to respond with the name of our arbitrator. I would suggest Vin Regasta, who better than to have someone like Vin, who knows the town, who's very good at arbitrations. He does labor, but this is, this is not complicated. We're not, we're not going to try to submarine here. This is.
Everybody's there to say the word is crap.
So.
Bad painting.
So I mean, it's gonna be, and also, it doesn't matter really who they pick as their arbitrator and who we pick as ours, because we know the way they're gonna come out. They're gonna come out for their, they're gonna come out for their, their client.
Yeah.
That, that's usually what happens. I shouldn't say they're going.
So it's a third.
But, but there's a third that's picked by those two. Now, I think that they picked Thomas Heald, who is a guy I know, does a lot of this contract stuff, um, as theirs. He's a good, good attorney. Uh, so Heald and whoever we pick, then have to pick a third. And it's between them at that point to pick, who's gonna be the critical person, the middle, the middle arbitrator. So given the tight timeframes, I'd suggest that you allow me to reach out to Vin, and if Vin can't do it, then to reach out to some other competent attorney who can act as our arbitrator, and then move on with the thing. We don't wanna go foul on the state statute, even if we think it doesn't really apply, because if we lose that, then we might end up with a default on our hands. And I always say, what's the risk and benefit? Big risk you're taking if you don't do it. Uh, and, uh, more benefit if you just, just benefit to just do it, getting it on, doing it as quickly as possible, getting it on. I think, quite frankly, just hope to get somebody with common sense and you know it, like, the way everybody that looks at these pictures finds. So.
Yeah, which.
But I need that again because of the urgency.
I don't wanna see it painted over spider webs.
They painted over spider webs.
You're not supposed to do that?
No.
Oh.
Provide fiber and stronger. And kneel it.
They're moving around.
I didn't think anybody was gonna look at their work.
Hey, you got number thirteen.
Do we need to, do we need to ask you to do something, please, can we fully ask you to do that?
I appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
You'll take a motion, please.
All in favor of Jim Maruzak reaching out to Ben?
Aye.
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 Do we need a motion?
There's a motion.
Second.
Oh, I thought it was.
All right, so we make the motion to ask Jim to reach out to Jim Maruzak to start the arbitration process for, for this additional claim of labor for, uh.
Trans.
TG.
Global.
And that's who we voted on, yes.
I think I have a thirteen also.
I just had another question. Um, there was a number thirteen here. I guess the state is making available three million dollars in grant funding, and the first round awards up to four hundred thousand, which may cover up to half of a project. Are there any posses, are there any posses of, of land that, in Exeter that, I have no idea, but are there posses of land, do we use this?
Yes, I would say, because this isn't only for, um, for buying land, because they can also, I know the land trust has had people come in front of them, like buy the development rights to mine thousand acres or whatever. So they're, like, the land is still privately held, but they'll never be able to develop it.
So this may be used for that, perhaps?
Yeah.
So what do we do with something like this? Can we, what, do we give it to the land trust committee?
You could send it to them, see if they want to.
Can we, can we do that? Can we send? Would you like this?
Want that.
Okay.
Ask them to pursue the grant?
To see if it's something that.
Yeah.
Or to bring it to their attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, just bring it to their attention, so it may not be applicable, but why not? That's a good thing to do.
Do I have another one?
No, you have two. Uh, Cal, you had number eight, which we covered.
Yeah, but I also had fourteen.
Yeah, I had number fourteen.
Did you read number fourteen?
I had.
First of all, yes, it was not called the South County Regional Planning Council. Believe me, I certainly remember, it was the Washington County Regional Planning Council. And if you'll notice, it indicates that I was the most recent representative. Uh, I don't, yes, it sees, it uses the word representative. It didn't say I was a director from the town of Exeter.
It was sent to me.
Would you like me to attend?
Yeah, you'd have to contact, it was sent to me from, from originally, and it was sent, so I sent it to Lynn, so.
Would you be willing to attend?
I, I'll, I'll go, but trust me, uh, I, I, I'll be, I'll keep my distance.
From the cash box?
No, yeah, from that. And I'm just gonna say, look, people, there's work here. And I'm just gonna say, look, well, I'm just saying, I don't know what I'll say, but I, I will go and attend this if you'd like me to. I will represent you unofficially, be your representative.
You will go gather information?
I will.
Please.
I won't stay that long either.
That's it. I'm gonna make a motion to take a five-minute break before we move on.
Before we, before we vote on that, um, executive session, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recuse myself from executive session, uh, D. And I'm wondering if there's anything else that's gonna be discussed during executive session besides D, if so, I will leave. I've already filled out the recusants, uh, recusants form, and I'm gonna go. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.